Hello, everybody.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Hello.
Hello.
All right. Pulling up the agenda here and, um, uh, City Clerk, are we all set to go? Do we have the, all our council members?
Uh, just a moment, Mayor, I'm still trying to get myself tied in here really quick. I think we're getting close.
Cool. Yep, just let me know. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I do have everybody online, so we are good to get started when you are ready.
All right, well then, yeah, game on. We good, we, uh, streaming now?
Yes, we should be good to go.
Excellent. Well, today is February first, twenty twenty-two of our regular council meeting. Uh, calling to order and, uh, just as notice to the public that council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice for any of the agendized items. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor DC.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslyn.
Hello.
Councilmember McCarthy.
I'm here.
Councilmember Salas.
President.
Councilmember Shimonie.
President.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Thank you, and, uh, tonight I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and let's have, uh, Councilmember Shimonie with our mission statement, uh, followed by Councilmember Sweet for our land acknowledgement. Uh, but to start off with our Pledge of Allegiance, if you will, please stand. If you have a flag, please face that, otherwise, uh, face to the east.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Councilmember Shimonie, our mission statement, please.
Yes, the mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, and, uh, Councilmember Sweet, our land acknowledgement?
Thank you. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Councilmember, um. The, uh, do we have anyone for general public participation tonight?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right, thank you, and I'm pulling up our, uh, proclamation for Agenda Item Number Five here. Five A, which is our Black History Month, and I do understand we have a, uh, a couple council member or committee members, uh, joining us, or commissioners, Commissioner Tonner and Chair Wegwart, uh, accepting the proclamation virtually.
Mayor, we do have Ms. Wegwart on the line. Ms. Wegwart, you may go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, uh, I'm Deanne Wegwart, and I am the Chair of the Commission on Diversity Awareness for the City of Flagstaff, and the commission is grateful to the City Council for making this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wegwart, and, uh, you're welcome to also say a few words if you'd like at the end of the proclamation, uh, or anyone else if they would like to, uh, chime in on this Agenda item. So the proclamation from the City of Flagstaff. The City of Flagstaff celebrates the rich cultural traditions and proud ancestry of African-Americans and people of the African diaspora, and recognizes the vital contributions African-American peoples and peoples of the African diaspora have made to strengthen and diversify our community. African-Americans and people of the African diaspora have played and continue to play an integral role in shaping, developing, and creating a vibrant city. First, as innovators working in the city's sawmills and railroads, later as educators and professors, civil rights activists, community organizers, and public servants, including our prior mayor. And the twenty twenty-two theme for Black History Month is Black Health and Wellness. It recognizes both the contributions and legacy of African-Americans and people of the African diaspora to the fields of medicine, health, and wellness, in- including multiple ways of knowing that inform the work of birth workers, doulas, midwives, naturopaths, herbalists, et cetera. We recognize as well the historic economic and health disparities faced by members of the African-American community and peoples of the African diaspora, and while long-standing have recently been highlighted by the SARS-COVID pandemic. The Flagstaff City Council dedicated to understanding the Black lived experience and its commitment to doing so through the Adoption of the Lived Black Experience Strategic Plan in December twenty twenty that provides clear direction and guidance to address conditions of American African, African-Americans and peoples of the African diaspora in the Flagstaff community. Commission on Diversity Awareness, in partnership with Coconino County African Diaspora Advisory Council and the Southside Community Association, recommends the designation of February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month in unison with national and statewide observances. Therefore, I, therefore, I, Paul JDZ, Mayor of the City Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim the month of February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month. Thank you so much, and, uh, if, um, those receiving would like to say a few words to this matter, I'd like to welcome, uh, welcome the floor to them.
Thank you, this is Deanne Wegwart again, I, I, um, a, a great deal of thought went into the construction of the proclamation, and there were a number of individuals that worked on that. Uh, I think it, uh, reflects, um, you know, where we are right now, and, uh, I know that Commissioner Tonner was a part of this work. Jean, do you have any words you'd like to say?
Thank you, Chair Wegwart, and, uh, thank you, Mayor DC, for your reading of this proclamation. I just want to reinforce what, um, uh, Chair Wegwart said, that this was a, uh, a joint, um, effort uh, among three organizations, and, uh, we are so very grateful to be able to forge these relationships within our, uh, community and, um, really, you know, reinforce all the threads that hold us together in this, uh, wonderful community that we occupy, and, um, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, um, I, I, this proclamation that you all put together is something that I really feel, uh, encompasses both the historical as well as the modern and what we're facing in twenty twenty-two, uh, very well, and I, I greatly appreciate your efforts, um, not just with the proclamation, but for all that you are doing to, uh, strengthen these ties and to bring awareness, um, to the huge, um, contributions of our African-American community and the African diaspora, um, historically as well as today. So, thank you so much for your input and, uh, your activism in this part. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number Six, this is our City Manager Report. Um, City Manager, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Um, Stacy, if you would like to queue up that PowerPoint I sent you, that would be great, thank you. Uh, Council, uh, staying with some recent traditions, uh, we'd like to start off, uh, the report in your packet by recognizing some work anniversaries of our employees, um, and we will accompany this with a PowerPoint, uh, so that we can get through it, uh, not just efficiently, but also that you have an opportunity to, um, see the faces and read the names, uh, and if we have the opportunity at the end to hear from one or two of the individuals who are celebrating significant anniversaries. By the way, this goes back to December, uh, we're getting caught up here after the holidays and some travel and so forth, um, we will do that. So if I can get rolling on this, next slide. Thank you for celebrating, we did celebrate some five-year anniversaries in, uh, December. Emily Markle with, uh, she's our procurement specialist, Emily, uh, happy anniversary belated. Um, Craig Smith, our facilities maintenance supervisor who has just retired, uh, but nevertheless, we want to recognize his five-year anniversary. Next slide, please. Uh, then we have Carlton Johns Recreation Assistant and Richard Hernandez, also a Recreation Assistant, uh, celebrated their five-year anniversaries. Vicki Baker is an Executive Assistant One and celebrated her twentieth year anniversary with the city, and then we have, and happy anniversary, Vicki, we have a number of significant anniversaries which we, uh, characterize as being twenty-five years or greater. The first goes to Richie Hearn, who's not able to join us today, but, uh, Richie, uh, knows that we're recognizing him. Rick, Rick, Richie, um, celebrated his thirty-six year anniversary in December, which is pretty remarkable. He's served in various roles in the Public Works Division, uh, working with the street section, he's worked out at cemetery, uh, has great institutional knowledge, quite dedicated to the mission of delivering core services, which he has done, uh, aptly, and he's a great example of, uh, what you hope for in a team, that's a quote coming from Sam Beckett. I'll continue with that quote. His passion and support for his staff and all who work with him is the first thing I noticed. Richie is truly the glue that holds the street section together. Uh, Sam, thank you for that quote. Richie, it's an honor to have you, and I hope you're able to, uh, see this recognition, recognition a little bit later on, but it's convenient for you. Next slide. Pardon me, John Strade works also with the facilities maintenance, um, and, uh, he came to work for the city in nineteen eighty-six, so, uh, some very quick math here, I think, uh, I think his anniversary is quite significant. Um, if I add this upright, uh, ten, twenty, thirty, thirty-five years, um, give or take, I hope I'm right on that. Uh, John is a Vietnam Vet, thank you for, for your service to our country, John. He has provided services in all aspects of maintenance, especially in construction, carpentry, cabinetry, and locksmithing. Uh, I took humor in noting that when needed, John even hops into our street plows and, um, helps out the street crew as he is a commercial driver's license holder, so, uh, a real friend to all in the service of the city. Happy anniversary belated to you, John. Thank you. Joe Amendares, uh, celebrated his twenty-sixth anniversary with, uh, Team Flagstaff, hired in nineteen ninety-five, um, and Joe quickly became an asset to Water Services where, uh, he spends his time obtaining all the necessary cert- certifications to serve the city's needs. He was promoted to Waste Water Collection Supervisor in two thousand and nineteen, and then added to the role of Stormwater Collection Supervisor in twenty twenty. He does all things water, uh, oversees ten employees in those, uh, collection systems, operates the big combo and back truck, so he operates some pretty, uh, big equipment that we've seen around the city, as well as the equipment, uh, in the Water Services Operations, everything from dump trucks to cranes to mini dozers. When he's not operating heavy equipment, he enjoys riding his Harley-Davidson, playing with his two dogs, uh, riding quads in the woods and in the dunes and spending time with his family and friends. What a wonderful, um, narrative here. We greatly appreciate the work, uh, that Joe has done for the city. Twenty-six year anniversary, and last but not least, um, we have Mike Abada, who is currently a Recreation Supervisor. Mike, I hope I got your last name correct. I think Mike's going to join us here on the video, uh, go ahead and turn your camera on if you're able to, Mike, and we're going to acknowledge you and you're quite, um, you're invited to, to, uh, respond in any way you would like of me, but in the interim, we're going to go ahead and talk about you a little bit, and I hope you're okay with that. You, uh, have served the city well for thirty-three years, congratulations on that anniversary, um, starting out with the aquatics program, back when the pools apparently, uh, were, um, resided within our school buildings, uh, so way before the Aquatic Center. Um, has managed the Jay Lively Activity Center, uh, for a long, long time, and, uh, I think operates the Zamboni. Um, Mike is an incredible asset to the City of Flagstaff team and his years of experience, mechanical know-how, thoughtful approach, and incredible sense of humor, Mike, our heart to beat. Uh, many congratulations to you, sir, and we'd love to, uh, hear any comments that you'd like to share since we've been talking about you.
Awesome, you, uh, said my name fairly accurately, it's Mike Abada. Um, thank you for the wonderful opportunity, uh, so grateful to work with so many wonderful city employees over the years, uh, Richie and, you know, people from all over, um, City Clerk, we've, uh, spent a lot of time together and contracts and everybody else, so, uh, you know, great team, and it's been a pleasure working all these years, continuing on, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, it's been our pleasure and a real honor, so, uh, thanks for spending time with us this afternoon, and thanks for letting us, uh, spend a little time talking about you, um, and congratulations once again to you. Uh, I believe that concludes our work anniversaries. Council, we will get back on track with, uh, January's anniversaries in a couple of weeks, and then we'll continue to do these on a monthly basis. Um, if I can go back to my manager's report then, uh, I wanted to touch on a few other things.
Uh, City Manager, uh, real quick, um, I just want to thank all of our employees, I mean, so many twenty-five year anniversaries plus, that's just, thank you so much for your service, and, um, I'd like to have all of our council members, if you'd like to unmute and, uh, video, just, just to give some applause, I mean, not being in city council chambers, it's, uh, it's difficult to show our appreciation sometimes, so I would just like to take a second here and really applaud our, our, uh, city staff. Thank you.
Way to go!
Woo!
Yay, Team Flagstaff!
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council, that was lovely, thank you.
Thank you so much, and, uh, without further ado, uh, City Manager, please take it away.
Indeed, uh, back to the report and back to the subject of employees, I'm going to give you some, some, um, updates and, 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 uh, a quick story. I do have a couple of things for Council to weigh in on, and then at the end of this report, um, we would love to hear from, um, uh, Dan Fulk, who, um, has submitted his end-of-the-year, uh, report for community development. Uh, we also have the monthly report from Economic Vitality, so, uh, Heidi Hansen or somebody on her team can speak to that, but, but we'll do that at the end. I just wanted to get you guys ready. Um, back to the report, uh, Fire Department, there's some, uh, stats in the report, quick stats, uh, nothing that's going to occupy a lot of volume here, just a couple of paragraphs, but interesting to note that calendar year twenty twenty, uh, brought us fifteen thousand seven hundred and twelve calls to our fire department. This last year, twenty twenty-one, resulted in fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five, um, very close, uh, I found that to be rather remarkable. The, um, some updates with, uh, Fire, including a nice photo from the, uh, the event involving the Christmas gifts, um, and, uh, many props to the officers who were involved in that wonderful, um, event, uh, of course, this is before the holidays, and I know it's after the fact now, but nevertheless, um, wanted to acknowledge the, uh, the great thoughtfulness that went behind that. Thank you. Human resource updates, uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, you're going to continue to hear this narrative about our vacant positions, and I don't mean to belabor the point, but it remains a, uh, a significant issue or challenge for the city organization. As of the end of twenty twenty-one, from HR, Human Resources, uh, they report seventy-five vacant positions in our organization, um, and you'll hear a little bit more, well, I'll just segue right into it, with police, um, our police department, our staffing needs, we have about seventy sworn officers, officers, uh, when we are fully staffed, I believe, currently seventeen of those positions are vacant, we have about eight in the academy, um, so there's, there's some help on the way, but nevertheless, and, and three are in field training, but it means that out of that, those seventy, um, about twenty-eight are either vacant or in some form of training, and that constitutes a forty percent vacancy rate, which has been the story of quite some time now. Dispatch, um, had, now has five vacancies and eight employees in training, uh, thirteen of the thirty police emergency communication specialists and supervisor, uh, positions are vacant or in training, that's about a forty-three percent vacancy rate. Um, so we'll continue to update you on that, Council, and, uh, stay tuned. I'd like to touch on what I found to be a rather remarkable story, this one has a little bit of, um, some shock factor to it, I guess, but a good outcome, so I'm going to go ahead and speak to it. Um, on January twelfth, in conjunction with the United States Marshal Service, uh, our police department, uh, worked in tandem to, uh, apprehend an individual who, um, was suspected in a rather brutal, um, double homicide in the state of Georgia, and, uh, was believed to be, uh, on the train to Flagstaff and, pardon me, at the Greyhound, Greyhound bus station, I should get my facts right, on the bus to Flagstaff, uh, deported the bus and was, uh, apprehended by two officers in plain clothes, Officer Pat Condon and Sergeant Clint Hill were assigned to this task and pulled it off, uh, with success, and the suspect was, uh, was apprehended and, and arrested. Uh, this was no easy feat, the suspect, of course, was, uh, believed to be involved in, in a very heinous crime, uh, and was also believed to be in possession of firearms, and he was, he had a firearm on his body and two more in his, uh, day pack, so a very high-risk operation that, uh, was successful and one that, uh, resulted in taking a rather, uh, dangerous, uh, suspected criminal off the streets of Flagstaff, so wanted to share that with you and offer up the, the, uh, the well-deserved accolades to Officer Pat Condon and Sergeant Clint Hill. Well done, officers. There's also an update about a community champion award, uh, presented to Mr. Scotter Penny for his assistance in bringing about the, um, conclusion and arrest of, uh, some suspected, uh, thefts. I won't get into any more detail other than to say thank you, uh, Mr. Penny, for your, your, uh, diligence and vigilance. Some updates from our pros, uh, division, including some foots-trails updates, um, always of high interest, and a little update on our community composting operation, and some statistics regarding visitors at Pitcher Canyon, McMillan Mesa, and Observatory Mesa, apparently for the, um, last year, the, the twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, over ninety-nine thousand visitors at these, uh, facilities, so, uh, our trails and open spaces are getting well-used. Lot of love for the open spaces in Flagstaff. Um, you have, uh, other statistics in there, and I will not, uh, go into those in detail, I would invite you to read those at your leisure if you've not done so already, and scrolling on to Public Works, um, some updates from our streets, uh, folks, um, regarding, uh, winter operations and things ongoing. We are, uh, seeing excavation at the Killup School, the new school facility regarding the Stormwater Improvement Project, which is being done in partnership with the school district in the city, that's great news. Solid Waste is working on interviews and hiring to cover their vacancies with their equipment operators, nine equipment operator vacancies with, uh, Solid Waste, so the story continues, it crosses the, the, uh, spectrum of the organization, stay tuned on all of that. Council, I'd like for you to weigh in quickly on this one, we have a request for use of the council chambers by the Arizona State Transportation Board. Uh, we would love to honor this request, but in lieu of the fact that we are in a virtual realm right now, we wanted to check in with you. Uh, the request is to use the council chambers for the February eighteenth meeting right around the corner, uh, it's a morning meeting, they anticipate about twelve to fifteen in-person attendees along with virtual attendees. Uh, there's a little more detail in there, but, um, that request is coming for you, and we were not comfortable rendering a decision at the staff level, so if you'd like to weigh in real fast, we'll run with the direction you give us.
Thank you, City Manager, um, Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor, um, as you know, I'm the Chair of the Metro Plan, and I can tell you, and I'm sure everyone here already knows this, our relationship with the Transportation Board is extremely important, uh, they basically decide where money goes and... You know, so, which, uh, I do...
Uh, Councilmember McCarthy, I don't know about, Councilmember McCarthy, sorry, uh...
So I would strongly, they're going to be somewhere in the city anyway.
Councilmember McCarthy?
What's going on?
My apologies, but you're breaking up pretty heavy on my end, maybe...
My end as well, Mayor.
Okay, uh, thank you, if you could turn your camera off and repeat, uh, I'd appreciate it so we can he- hear your full, um, comment.
All right, I'll start over, um, and tell me if it's breaking up. I'm the Chair of the Metro Plan, uh, representing the city, of course, and our relationship to the, uh, the, the State Transportation Board is very, very important, so I suggest that we should allow them to use our chambers. Um, if we do not allow them to use it, they're going to meet in person somewhere in town here anyway, they've made that decision, so, uh, I support them, uh, being able to use our council chambers, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, uh, Vice Mayor?
That broke up less.
Yep, we're, we're good, we, we heard you loud and clear there, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mayor, my question, um, really is just how much staff time and presence would it take for them to meet in council chambers?
Thank you, I don't believe it will take a lot of staff time, I think this question is more whether council has a comfort in having your chambers used with, uh, some in-person meetings at a time when you're having virtual meetings, but I do not believe there will be a lot of, uh, staff involvement. Stacy Salzberg, please correct me if I misstated that.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton, um, yeah, we can, can look into that, I don't think it would be a significant amount of staff time.
I mean, my, my, my only concern would be, um, additional exposure to, um, of our staff, and if there's not any in its staff that would already be there, um, I would be okay with it, I think.
Thank you for your thoughtfulness, my hunch is that we're talking about just opening the doors and turning on the lights and that sort of thing, so I, uh, maybe, uh, maybe activating some of the equipment, but I don't think that there will be a heavy staff presence by any means, but again, others can correct me on that. Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor, for that.
Yes, thank you, uh, Councilmember Salas? Yes, thank you, uh, Councilmember Solis.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I, I anticipate that, uh, um, our, our, uh, protocols with COVID mitigation will be communicated to the, the, uh, members of, uh, transfer, the Transportation Board and ADA staff, uh, managing the meeting. Having that's, uh, having said that, I believe it is crucial that we welcome and appreciate that the, the, the Transportation Board, um, even considering, uh, to have, hold their meeting in Flagstaff. And it's, it's very integral into, uh, we're building and cultivating relationships with our Transportation Board as well as, um, ADOT, uh, leadership. And I say that on behalf of my, uh, role with Metro Plan Board as well as the statewide rural transportation advocacy council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Uh, Councilmember Shimon?
Thank you, Mayor. And my internet is a little choppy, so I'm going to keep my camera off. Um, City Manager, thank you for bringing this before us. I, I like a lot of colleagues who have spoken, I also feel very excited that the Transportation Board is playing, planning to meet in Flagstaff. And that they, uh, have reached out about using our chambers. I personally feel comfortable with that, Mayor, in council. I, I think that given the, the numbers, although very high today, um, my understanding is that it's going to be a sharp drop-off. And so I'm already thinking that we're on the other side of this, but we can talk about that with our next agenda item on COVID. But personally, I feel comfortable with this smaller group meeting in our chambers and I'm really excited about it. And I'm wondering what we can do to really make them feel welcome. Um, maybe, you know, have, so I, I don't know, obviously while keeping COVID parameters and safety in mind, but really, really treating them like the guests that they are. And, uh, you know, that this relationship is really important to us and that we're grateful that they're spending time in Flagstaff. Um, so yeah, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Um, with the proper mitigation, I am perfectly good with them using our council chambers and um, Councilmember Shimon, I think you're right. Let's welcome them in. I think it's a big deal that they're here in Flagstaff and I'm a yes for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Uh, Councilmember Allison?
Yeah, just for the record, I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
Well, uh, I'll chime in. I'm okay with it. Uh, but let me be very, very clear with council that we need clear, same level playing field for Transportation Commission coming in as opposed to our residents coming into council chambers to be able to speak. If we are going to allow this, which I'm okay with, we're starting to see the numbers come down. Then that following week, we need to be able to go back to a hybrid model. Um, because I don't feel comfortable giving special treatment to one entity while not giving that same level of treatment to our own residents to be able to attend city council, uh, meetings in person. So that's where I stand. I'm okay with it, but let's be logically consistent here. So, uh, with that, uh, Councilmember McCarthy?
Uh, Mayor, your comments make sense. Uh, my question was, what will be the date of that meeting?
Oh, uh, I have it in my report. Thank you, Councilmember. It is, bear with me, please, February eighteenth.
Uh, thank you, Greg, and, and thank you, Sarah.
I think I was faster than Sarah, but, um, we can give her credit.
Well, we can, uh, bring that up, uh, later on, but then if with the February eighteenth date, then I would say that we need to be able to go back to a hybrid model for the Tuesday, February twenty-second meeting. So, um, that's the caveat for my, for me being in support of, uh, uh, of this, which, which I am, but, uh, let's, again, just be logically consistent. Councilmember Shimon?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up and we can dive into this, maybe on the next agenda item when we talk about COVID. Maybe I should save my comments about this. Let's just maybe have that discussion then. Um, but yeah, I think there's direction for this meeting. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Well, we'll pick that up with the COVID update, um, and I think you have your, uh, uh, direction regarding the other meeting, so.
And thank you, Mayor, I do. Thank you so much. And, uh, thank you, uh, to the entire council for weighing in on that. Councilmember Shimon, uh, the next item could be of interest to you, just a hunch. But, uh, we do have a couple of video links in the manager's report courtesy of Sarah Langley. And Samantha, uh, who goes by Sam. Uh, and a couple of videos and we are on our way to, uh, more videos. We will continue to, uh, provide links to them for your watching enjoyment. And, uh, Vice Mayor notes that she was not able to access the videos. Um, we'll do our best. Uh, all I can do is provide the links, Vice Mayor, but beyond that, my technology comes to a standstill. An update, uh, is in the report on the Citizen Bond Committee. Uh, we will be meeting again this week. We've been meeting weekly. Mad props to Shannon Anderson for helping with this. Our consultants have been helping. Uh, we have a lot of people actually helping on this. A lot of staff have been attending and presenting, as you can see from the, uh, timeline that is in my report. Uh, we are in the middle of a lot of presentations now and we will segue into uh, the next one, uh, Stormwater Infrastructure, and then two sessions involving housing, two sessions involving climate action. And then we will be reaching out to the, uh, the community with, uh, a survey, a limited survey, and stay tuned on all of this. You'll continue to get updates and snippets as to how this very important endeavor is going. Uh, also attached to my report are, uh, a couple of letters of support. Uh, CJ Perry has been, um, engaged in trying to uh, help with some projects that involve the placement of fiber broadband infrastructure. I know that's of high interest to to you, Mayor, and to the council. Uh, we're doing, uh, and we'll be talking, uh, a lot about that or more about that during the upcoming. I mean, council budget retreat on Thursday and Friday of this week. By the way, we're having a budget retreat on Thursday and Friday of this week, just a reminder. Um, all day Thursday and likely half a day Friday. It will be facilitated. It will be entirely virtual. Uh, looking forward to that. Staff has been getting prepped for that. I think that concludes my report, but I would like to welcome, uh, either, uh, Dan Volk or Heidi Hansen, whoever wants to kick off their summaries and just give a quick high-level, um, thumbnail of what the summaries include for, for council and for the community. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director. I am going to turn off my camera, but I wanted to kind of rapid-fire go through some of the report. Um, what makes this report special is it not only shared, uh, what we did in December, but it kind of, we went back and showed year-end highlights of the division. And some things to note is the airport reached employments of a hundred and eight thousand, which is just fifteen thousand employment shy of our record year of two thousand and nineteen. So we are on great track to, uh, continue to, uh, raise employments at the airport. As you know, the second parking lot was started and we did a ribbon cutting with, uh, many of you out there. Thank you. Uh, Mayor spoke and so did Greg. And, uh, basically we will be in full swing in that parking lot, hopefully in, uh, spring. We also started all of our CARES Act projects, which are several, as you know, we have, um, received a lot of grant funding with uh, the help of the federal and state, and of course, always the help of our contracts and, um, manager Stacy Breckler, and she's amazing. And then, uh, we got to try out our snow equipment that we've been receiving from FAA this year. We also had, uh, tons of airport rescue firefighting training at the airport, which also included our, uh, fire team. And then last but not least with the airport, we marketed, we marketed, and we marketed. So that's, um, some exciting things. You'll not only see things in our local media, but you will also see a new installation at the NAU Sky Dome if you're there. And then with Park Flag, we actually did over nine hundred and thirty-one hours. Um, that people had parked there with over four hundred and twenty-eight thousand transactions. We also changed all of our signage so that it would be easier for people to understand. We also resumed parking after the pandemic in March and we installed curbside locations and, uh, those are still working to this day. And then something that you'll be seeing very soon is the two new parking lots that we've been able to establish more parking for downtown. And then, of course, we always do an annual parking report if you're interested. For Beautification Arts and Sciences, uh, they are a mighty team of two and they actually did, um, a new alley art piece. They did some work at Buffalo Park. They did walking tours. And then, of course, uh, you were out there joining us at the courthouse art piece that we are very excited about. We did a flower project in historic downtown. And we also did traffic signal cabinets. And I think that you're seeing, uh, more and more of those going up. And we are using local artists for that. So it's very exciting. We also did climate change and hope on some bus artwork. And then the list goes on. Economic development, one of the biggest things was Whitehall Industries coming to Flagstaff with over a hundred and fifty jobs. We're super proud of that. We actually won an award for that best deal with Econa. We also have a Catalyst Space Technologies that joined us. And we also have some success with our incentive programs that all of you helped us to adopt. Our adaptive reuse incentive had three recipients. Our business retention expansion incentive had two recipients. Our job creation incentive had two recipients. And our sustainable automotive rebate had seventeen successful, successful recipients. Um, so we're very excited about that. And last but not least, our innovate waste challenge that we do do with sustainability had two recipients. So you can see that these incentives are being heard about and they are actually being used. Our library was chosen as the best public servant, um, agency, excuse me, for the seventh year in a row. They also, um, did new catalog videos. They actually seamlessly, um, moved us into a new ILS system. And they also, um, did some fun drive-through events that showed us that these things can happen. And of course, curbside was active more than ever. There is lots more recaps, um, on, uh, counts and things like that of how many people were in the facility, how many people did curbside. Please look at the report. And then tourism, last but not least, won two governor, governor awards, uh, for tourism. One was, um, for best tourism partnership with Pledge for the Wild. And then we also won something with Canyon Diablo Distillery. So I just want to let you know, again, um, our work is sustainable, it's eco-friendly, and it's winning awards. Our tourism metrics were outstanding. Talk about a rebound. Uh, we did it. We had an occupancy average of seventy-three point three percent. In an industry, anything over sixty percent is valued. And then our average daily rate and our revenue per available rooms were insane. Please look at those. Visitor Center served over ninety-eight thousand visitors and our retail sales almost topped three hundred thousand dollars. We also held a mini, uh, coffee clutch, eleven meetings with our stakeholders. We, uh, were full swing with international travel and trade. Um, our meetings and events and conferences were huge. We actually, um, did, we sold actually, we had twenty-one leads. We had five thousand, five hundred forty-four room nights. And it was an estimated impact of over one point three million. So talk about a rebound there. Marketing Media Relations, over four hundred, over four thousand, four hundred and forty-four print and digital articles were, um, procured through this group. We had, um, broadcast programs. We had a publicity value that was huge. We actually increased our publicity value by twenty-five percent this year. And we did sweepstakes, we did email campaigns, we continue to keep Flagstaff Local My Actions Matter campaign alive. Our social media stats were through the roof. And then last but not least, creative services. If you saw the ads, that is not even touching the surface of the work that they've done, not only for our visitation, but for the city of Flagstaff in general. So very, very proud of this team. Uh, really helpful to have a council that supports us. And thank you, Greg, for allowing me to go through that in rapid speed. Appreciate it.
That was rapid speed. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Uh, yeah. Director Hanson and the whole team, just amazing, amazing results we've seen last year and, uh, especially in a year we were having some expectations that would, would not be as successful as what we've seen and that, um, really is, um, a lot to do with the good team that we have in Economic Vitality. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think, uh, staying with the theme of how, uh, a lot of business in our organization continues to, um, to thrive, actually, even during the pandemic. Uh, now we can segue, uh, to that of community development and hear, I'm sure, about building permits along with other things. Dan, it's going to be hard to talk as fast as Heidi, but, uh, feel free to try that if you like.
Yes, thank you, Greg. And thank you, Heidi. There's been some exciting things we've talked about already tonight, so, uh, I won't try to top them, but I'll just tell you what's going on in community development. Uh, I really appreciate this opportunity to highlight a few things that are in the end-of-year report that we prepared this year. Uh, community development is comprised of the housing section, the planning and development services section, the building, safety and code compliance program, and the real estate program. Uh, we currently have fifty-five full-time employees. And we're getting very close to being back to full staffing. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and just highlight a few things that are in the, uh, annual report that's attached to Greg's manager's report. Can you all see the screen?
Yep, looking good.
And so the first thing I want to do is recognize what I call the community development leadership team. So these are our section directors and our program managers. And it's really this group, um, that is responsible for everything that's getting done, uh, and all of the staff, of course, all of the, uh, fifty-five folks who work in community development. So I'm very grateful to the continued support and work of our leadership team. One of our accomplishments, accomplishments this year was to refresh our mission and vision. I think we identified the old community development, uh, mission went back to like two thousand and six. And of course, we've had almost complete turnover of our staff since that time. And so back in November, we did a facilitated morning. Um, here you see our new mission, which is to build community together, provide service with integrity, and honor the diverse heritage of Flagstaff. We've got our values identified in the middle of the document. And then how we implement our, our mission every day is through our vision to champion a vibrant, equitable, sustainable, and safe community for today and future generations. And I'm really proud. We had forty-one of forty-nine folks invited, participate in the creation of this. Uh, so forty-one of our team members, I believe that we all, uh, supported and we can now endorse it because it's our own mission and vision. So really proud of that work. Just a few highlights from the year-end report. Uh, we're very close to bringing you the housing plan. You've seen the draft tenure housing plan. The Housing Commission approved, uh, the housing plan last Thursday. This is going to be in front of city council on February fifteenth. Uh, you can see here, uh, in our document, I don't have links to videos, but I do have links to websites. And we've got a link here to the tenure housing plan. We're really excited to present that to you. Uh, we touch on a number of programs here. I'm just going to talk about a couple of them. One is the Home Buyer Assistance Program. We were able to assist eight home buyers last year, last calendar year with, um, down payment and closing costs. And I want to go next to our, uh, Housing Authority. Uh, we have an extremely well-run Housing Authority. This is, of course, a federally funded program. We have two hundred and sixty-five units that the city of Flagstaff or the Housing Authority owns and operates and maintains. We also have over five hundred vouchers. And these are vouchers that are available to income qualifying households. They pay thirty percent of their income, no matter what it is. The balance is covered by the voucher. Uh, we continue to get vouchers from Housing and Urban Development HUD. The reason we get these vouchers is because what a well-run Housing Authority we have. It's a real credit to Sarah Dar and her management team at the Housing Authority that they continue to come back to us with these specialized vouchers. For really disadvantaged populations, not just low-income, but veterans, uh, victims of abuse and some of those other populations. So, uh, just so proud of all the work our Housing Authority does. And when you add that together, it's seven hundred and seventy-six households that the city of Flagstaff. And when you add that together, it's seven hundred and seventy-six households that the city of Flagstaff is directly involved in providing housing for. And that number continues to grow. Next, I want to go down to our current planning program. This is led by our current planning manager Alexandra Puccirelli. This team is the SPOC or the Single Point of Contact for development review on all concept and site plans in the city of Flagstaff. So all new commercial, industrial, multifamily projects need to go through a concept and site plan process before they pull building permits. You can see we do a lot of pre-application meetings. And while we thought last year was very busy, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one was even busier. And you can see really we're on this upward trend. I really want to recognize all the staff in current planning, Alexandra, Tiffany, Genevieve, Patrick, and our newest member Wesley Welch, who just started last week. We're very close to being back to full staffing. This team has worked extremely hard as the single point of contact to get these projects, keep them on schedule. And really help with the economic growth of Flagstaff. We have a link here to the current planning website. Last year, we launched the Citizen Access Portal. Becky Cardiff is our Development Services Manager. This is an online portal where you can submit all of your development permits, make payments through the portal. So it's been an amazing success, especially during the last couple of years. Next is our comprehensive planning program. We have a link here to our comprehensive planning page. Sarah Decter is our comprehensive planning manager. The big kickoff for Sarah and her team is the regional plan update. The current plan was adopted in twenty fourteen, ratified by the voters in twenty fourteen as well. So we have ten years to update it. So this past year, we've been focused on data collection and a series of seminars, online seminars on specific topics. They're webinars, I guess, since they're on, on the web. And then this year for the regional plan, we really start our kind of community involvement. So we'll convene a public stakeholder group during this next calendar year. And that's kind of the next big task. And so the regional plan will proceed, we'll be providing you an updated regional plan in twenty twenty-four. So we've still got two years to work on that. We've got a link here to the regional plan update. And then another big component of our comprehensive planning program is public participation. As many of you know, Sarah is trained as a public participation professional. We've sent Mark Revis through this similar training. And so we provide a lot of resources to other programs and divisions within the, within the city of Flagstaff. Helping them with some of their public participation and outreach. So we're really happy to be supporting the entire organization in that way. Next, I want to talk about our building safety and code compliance program. Got a lot of numbers here. The big number that jumps out at me is during this last calendar year, we had over two hundred and ninety-one million in construction valuation. That was up from twenty twenty by fifty-seven million or twenty-five percent. And so the, that speaks to the volume of the projects, the complexity of the projects. It probably does reflect some of the increasing costs in materials as well. But again, an amazingly productive year, even during these days of COVID. This is a monthly report because it's December, it shows you year-to-date. And so here you can compare the twenty twenty numbers over on the right to the twenty twenty-one numbers. You can compare December and then year-to-date, these two columns would be for the whole year. And we have a breakdown of some of these projects in different categories, so please take a look at that. And then code compliance is also part of our building safety team. I should mention Amy Palmer is our building official. Reggie Eccleston is our code compliance manager. Really pleased with all the work they've been able to provide to the community in the last year. Over eighteen hundred cases, the vast majority of those are initiated by staff. One of the things that's kind of a misunderstanding or a myth is that code compliance is completely complaint-driven. That's really not true. We initiate the majority of these cases, over fifteen hundred of those eighteen hundred were staff-initiated. That means we identified the issue. Sometimes it does come from a citizen complaint. If we go to a home to inspect an issue, we'll look at the whole neighborhood. So that we're not just, you know, focusing on one property. But some of the big things we've been able to succeed are with graffiti abatement, over seven hundred cases of graffiti. Keeping sidewalks clear, not only from the snow, but we spend a lot of time in the summer and fall dealing with vegetation on sidewalk. So keeping our sidewalks accessible to all is really important. And then another one that we all love very dearly is our dark sky program. We've been very successful with this shared position. As you know, the IGA was renewed this past year. The dark sky specialist is co-funded between the city and Coconino County. In the last year, we believe we have removed close to two million lumens just in the last calendar year. Since, since we've had the shared position, we believe more than three million lumens have been removed. And this is really key to keeping not only our dark sky heritage, but keeping our dark sky economy here in Flagstaff. So the observatories. You know, both the Flagstaff Station Naval Observatory and the Lowell Observatory. We're ready to bring you a round of code amendments on our lighting standards. This was an outcome of a pollution study that was done by the observatories probably five years ago. It led to the joint land use study, which is where we came up with the shared position. And then they recommended a number of amendments to our lighting code. And so our team has been working with the local professionals for over a year. I think we're very close to bringing that to you and I think later this calendar year, you're going to see those amendments. And then finally, I just want to mention the real estate program. Bryce Doughty is our real estate manager. Not only do they work on leases and, you know, our existing facilities, the real estate that the city of Flagstaff owns. But Bryce also works very closely with the capital team on all those capital projects and getting the property rights. So he's very involved with the Rio de Flag flood control project. The Lone Tree Overpass, the Switzer Water Main going up to the, north to the tank. And then some of our leases as well. So Bryce has had a really busy, productive year. And with that, I am going to stop sharing my screen. And again, I really appreciate the time and I'm very grateful to all of our team members in community development. And we look forward to another productive year.
Thank you, Dan. That's just such great information on how we are serving the public and how we are seeing the outcomes of all the effort of our city staff. So I really appreciate the time you are taking to being able to inform us and the public about that because this is crucial information to show how much adding results as a city government. So thank you so much and yeah.
But thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dan, for a very nice summary of a very good report. It is a good read, I would invite anybody to give it a review at your leisure. And same comment with the economic vitality report, thank you Heidi for that update. That concludes my report, Mayor and Council. And as anybody has any questions, I'll let you get on with other business.
Thank you, City Manager. Always really appreciate these reports. It's really great for all of us. Not seeing any Caesar Qs in the comments or the chat box rather. So with that, we are down to agenda item number seven A. This is our COVID nineteen update. I'm assuming a deputy city manager, oh, there you are.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Shannon Anderson, Deputy City Manager. I am pulling up the COVID report now so we can go through the information that Rose and I have prepared for you today. Let's just begin this slideshow. So this is our dashboard update. We do have some additional information on what we've been doing as city staff to share the Coconino County Health and Human Services information for you today, as well as our data and Indigenous nations' updates. So we'll start with that. Our Public Affairs and Discover Flagstaff teams continue to repost these messages from Coconino County Health and Human Services. We feel it's important as part of our partnership. We believe it's getting really good following. Public Affairs reported the week of January tenth that we had received forty to a hundred comments on reposting this information. So these are just a few of the most recent examples of things that we are resharing as part of that partnership. So thanks to Public Affairs and Discover Flagstaff for continuing to get that message out. We look at our weekly cases. We do note that there was some additional cases reported for the week of January fifteenth. It went from three thousand four hundred and thirty to three thousand five hundred and fifty, which was an additional hundred and twenty cases. The good news is, is we're starting to see a decline in the number of cases dropping down to the two thousand eight hundred and ninety-two for weekending January twenty-second. We look again at a geographical area. Flagstaff continues to have the highest number of COVID cases. But again, seeing our first downturn since the beginning of January. The good news is, is our tribal communities, as you see in that light brown line, is also experience a slight decrease in their number of cases. So good news for Coconino County. Looking at our hospitalizations, we've had an uptick for weeks, January first through January fifteenth. There is a slight delay. So the twenty-one that we thought we had in the week of January first increased to twenty-nine. The week of January eighth, we originally thought we had thirty-eight hospitalizations. You'll see forty-eight in this report, so it's gone up by ten. And then again, for weekending January fifteenth, we went up by four from thirty-six to forty. But the good news here on this slide is that the number of hospitalizations also seems to be matching what we're seeing for case trend. And those numbers are coming down. We continue to see the highest group that's impacted, our ages twenty-two, forty-four. Our COVID nineteen-related deaths. We have three that were reported for the week of January twenty-second. Again, increases for the week of January eighth as well as January fifteenth. So this slide will look a little different to you. Typically, I just include this community transmission chart. But I thought it would be beneficial to let you know that here's the data points up at the top. So I'm just adding a little bit more information so folks can see verbally what I am reporting out. So we are still high community transmission. The good news is, is we are seeing our case incident rate, which is this number here in the middle, the two thousand forty-four rate per hundred thousand has decreased from two thousand four hundred and twenty-four. So a good trend there. Our percent positivity, which is just the second box over to the right, this thirty point four percent positivity yield has increased but just slightly, it was twenty-nine point one percent last week. And then lastly, this last box on the right, the eighteen point nine percent COVID-like illness. Again, a very slight increase, it was eighteen point five percent last week. Looking at our rates for vaccination, again, continuing to see a slight increase week after week. We are now at seventy-one point one percent of eligible people being vaccinated in Coconino County. And this is compared to seventy point five percent last week. When we're looking at our variants, we did see a slight increase in the Delta variant for the month of January samples. It's gone up by fifteen to the two thousand six hundred and fifty-eight that you see on the screen here. Continuing to see the majority of the samples test for Omicron. That number of six hundred and fifty-nine is an increase of a hundred and forty-six samples since the week prior. So majority of what we're seeing as far as our samples is still Omicron in the month of January. When we look at our vaccine breakthrough, we are experiencing twenty-three point six percent of our total cases have vaccine breakthrough. This compares to nineteen point six percent. And just a quick reminder, we do anticipate that that number will continue to climb the further folks get out from the date in which they were fully vaccinated. It's why we continue to hear from CDC as well as our local health department that it's important to get your booster. Last slide here I have before we'll turn it over to Rose. Northern Arizona Healthcare reports that we have fifty-nine positive COVID patients in our Flagstaff Medical Center. This compares to fifty-three the week prior. We also have three new pending patients also in, at FMC. When we're looking at our hospital capacity, this has improved significantly. This report is from January thirtieth, but as of that date, we had fifty-four more beds available, hospital beds available. Still running a little low on critical care, but again, that has increased slightly by one to a total of three critical care beds available. So I am going to pass this over to Rose to go over the Navajo Nation data for us.
Good evening, everybody, Mayor and Council and city leadership. I'm going to say hi with my picture up there and then I'll go ahead and take that camera off. I've been sort of, teams has been kicking me off the past few, when we started council. So just in case Shannon will be on standby, thank you. So you'll see the chart there, the table there with the, with the numbers. And with Navajo Nation, they're still continuing to test. And negative cases still are, still up there in, in good numbers comparing to the tests that are being received. Positive cases are still client, are still pretty high and, but still neck and neck with recoveries. So those are good numbers with forty-six hundred to thirty-three, forty-three hundred or almost forty-four hundred. The deaths are still at a lower number than it was before about this time last year. But, but you know, any, any kind of death is not good. So we're hoping that people continue to vaccinate or booster. Next, Shannon. As far as the Hopi tribe is concerned, their cumulative total is at twenty-two, forty-four. And they're reporting at there's the fourteen-day and seven-day active cases, which are there three twenty-seven and one forty-nine. As far as the Omicron variant, their samples are showing that they're at forty-three, or I'm sorry, fifty-three percent. And then the Delta is at forty-seven percent of those samples. And then their total vaccination reservation wide is at eighty, almost at eighty-two percent. And then eligible vaccinated as that is at ninety, almost at ninety-two percent. So those are really good numbers for the Hopi tribe. And go ahead and go to the next one, thank you. And the same with Navajo Nation, their, the samples for the variant of concern is fifty-nine percent for the, out of the twenty-two hundred and eighty-nine samples tested. Those are Delta variant. And then fourteen percent out of that is Omicron. And that number is continued, it seems to continue to climb. But as far as the population vaccinated, it's sixty-four percent. And seventy, almost seventy-four percent of eligible population vaccinated. And those are really the reservation residents that are close to IHS facilities where they can count those numbers. The safer at home requirements are still intact. And those are necessary according to our leadership that, that, that those are helping to keep the numbers down. Again, those, those are some of the public health emergency orders that are declared for schools is that red status still and remains the same. The same for businesses, it's still at orange status for that, which basically means that the schools will, are offered the hybrid of visual models in, in place for the schools. And then for businesses, they're operating at the fifty percent maximum occupancy. So that's what the public health order is regarding. And then the health advisories, those have sort of really climbed. And then the health advisories, those have sort of really climbed in the past since the last report. Ninety-one communities and which is up by forty-nine community, communities since last report. And again, schools, community serving those schools are, are just really implementing layers of mitigation for the students. And then another news on that for Navajo Nation is the ARPA hardship funds or assistance funds. They will be starting to be issued in February. Those will be going to all enrolled adults to receive two thousand each, and then six hundred per minor. And as you recall, they also had some hardship assistance from CARES Fund, and those enrolling, membership, Navajo Nation members that did apply at that time do not need to reapply, so that's regarding the hardship assistance. Okay, Shannon, next. As far as the Hopi is concerned, they have returned to Phase Two of reopening, and that is effective from January fourteenth through March thirteenth. And that really includes the provisions, that includes the recommendation for everyone over five to get fully vaccinated. Masks still required in all public facilities and buildings, common areas and outdoors. Recreation, tourism, and visitations are not encouraged at this time. And then there's a coordination between public safety or, public safety and villages to coordinate welfare checks and other health-related contacts with these, with the, with the villages. And then businesses are, again, restricted to screen employees and also to have encourage, have the employees are highly encouraged to telework or, or have rotating schedules. So those are some things that are for, up for Hopi, Hopi tribe. The COVID Emergency Rental Assistance is a program to assist eligible Hopi families that need assistance for payment of rent utilities or anything that they have arrears in regarding rent. And so those that are impacted, but of course, by the pandemic. And then any further details can be obtained from the Hopi Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Also, there is a dependent care hardship assistance as well for those families who are unable to provide documentation. And there's, this is part of the package, is that they can provide documentation where they don't have the necessary documents to, to say that they are going through hardship. But these are regarding reduced hours, or they have quit work to care for dependents because of closures of schools or care facilities. And so those are some avenues that are available to our Hopi members. Thank you, and that's all I have right now.
Thanks, Rose. So Mayor and Council, both Rose and I will stand by in case you have any questions as you turn the discussion inward.
Thank you to both of you. I did have a question regarding whether, you know, we're getting the percentage of those who test positive who are fully vaccinated versus not. I'm wondering, is there an opportunity to see who is hospitalized, who is vaccinated or not at the local level? So that way we can, yeah, better create that extra data point? Or is that something that may not be available to us? I know being able to identify individuals is a key component of our ability to report, but just wondering if that's in the realm of possibilities.
So Mayor, if I understand your question correctly, we're looking for a data point on hospitalization and specifically the percentage of individuals who are hospitalized that are not fully vaccinated, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I will look to see if we have that data available, and I'll include that in our next report if we have it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Council, any further questions or comments? Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Deputy C Manager Anderson and Rose for the presentations, really important information. I always appreciate your time and your efforts here. Mayor, I just wanted to bring back up your, your point about the in-person council meetings, you know, given that this is probably the best time to discuss it, right? You know, I would say ideally, we wait to see the data reflect the numbers really decline, but I think in the coming weeks, we're gonna see that data being reflected that way. And so, given that the ADOT meeting is on the eighteenth, that's like two and a half weeks out. The fifteenth is the Tuesday before. I just wanted to initiate that conversation with Council and yourself and see if there was any clarity by the group in terms of, you know, considering, I guess, Mayor, you can lead this if you have thoughts, but, you know, I hear your comment about ADOT. I do think it's different than a council meeting. I do see a big difference there in terms of like what goes behind it and the engagement and whatnot, but I can respect where you're coming from or appreciate it. So I guess I just wanted to open up that conversation with the group. I can't promise that I'm gonna be there on the fifteenth or that it's safe to be there on the fifteenth or the eighteenth at this point, right? It's hard to say, but, yeah, do you have any thoughts you want to share, Mayor or others?
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney, for, yeah, raising that issue. I do have one question about it, which is this transportation meeting, is that open to the public? That would be held in council chambers?
I would assume so.
Mayor, this is Stacy Salzberg. Sorry, you can't see my face. I'm in chambers. I do believe that that meeting is open to the public. Yes.
Okay, so if we're holding a meeting open to the public within city council chambers for the transportation, then I see it as completely logically inconsistent if the following week, we are only being held virtual and not allowing the public to enter council chambers to see us in person. I think that is a very, very bad public relations and view on our part, and that we are allowing a organization of very prominent individuals to hold public meetings within our facility while we're not willing to do so for ourselves and our own residents who want to be there. So I am gonna reiterate and say, given that there is already direction that on the eighteenth, we would be providing our facilities for this open meeting in our city council chambers. I think that thereafter on, is it eighteenth, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, on the twenty-second, that then we would be returning to a hybrid model for council. Do you see Councilmember Shimoney has a comment followed by McCarthy?
Really quick, I'll just say, I think the twenty-second makes sense if we're gonna try to pick a date, but we could bump that up if the numbers do decline dramatically. But yeah, I'm curious what other people have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. With talking into the pros or cons, this is just a point of fact. I have attended transportation board meetings, and there's essentially no public that attends. I mean, theoretically, people could attend, but it's essentially zero. And I'm not, well, I guess we've already established that the public would be allowed in these meetings, but again, essentially, no one attends them. The numbers are very small.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, and I do appreciate that fact. Just recognize that those meetings that we've had in person for ourselves, for city council meetings, very, very rarely have any more than a handful of individuals in the crowd aside from city staff. So I, I think that's an equivalent measure. Vice Mayor Daggan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I am ready to go back whenever the numbers indicate that it's okay to do so and, and when the city body feels comfortable doing that, just, you know, recognizing that we have to have staff present with us. So I'm willing to, I mean, if we even want to put this on the agenda for next week to talk about a date that we want to go back or wait until we have our next COVID presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Assley?
Thank you. So there's a couple of things going on here. We're still revisiting this conversation about the ADOT meeting, which is appropriate. And then the issue of when do we return to our normal new hybrid system? So a couple of thoughts. Mayor, I appreciate the point you made about consistency. That's, that's not my primary priority at this, at this point. I, I, I get that consistency is a valuable thing to engage in. I also think contextually that ADOT transportation meeting is a very different beast than our ongoing normal city council Tuesday meetings. I think the public can appreciate those differences. This is a one-off ADOT meeting. Its timing is not of our choosing. I think we're, it's important for us to extend a welcoming tone to them and to provide them that space so that they can do their thing. It's a nice gesture. It really doesn't, in my mind, you know, and I'm just one guy with one opinion here, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily play into the larger conversation and decision that we need to have about our council meetings. Councilmember Shimoney, you mentioned an eagerness to get back to these in-person meetings. I, I, you know, that's, I, I share that. I share the values behind it. Mayor, you've mentioned this too. The accessibility of the public is very important. And I share your, your optimism that we're going to get there quickly. What I don't want to do is predetermine or make decisions based off of our best, most hopeful guesses about what's going to happen. I happen to agree that I think we're getting there. I'm very excited about that. I'm not gonna make a decision to come back to in-person hybrid meetings based off of my personal rosy prognostications. I want to see the numbers, and I've said this before, and I, I'll say this again. I would, I would like for us to be able to very nimbly move in and out of these situations going forward. I, I want to reject the notion that somehow there's a momentum that is gathered here that, that makes it hard for us to, to turn on a dime and change these decisions. But I want to see the data. And in fact, you know, just thinking out loud here, what the, the value that I bring to this in terms of consistency is, I, I would like to see the numbers actually stabilized. So just because we have a one-week drop, I don't want to conclude erroneously that what we're seeing is an actual drop. It'd be nice if we had a couple of weeks of consistency built into that, where the numbers are going down and they continue to stay down. So that's what I'm gonna be looking at. But rest assured, when it's time to make that call, I will happily do it in a very expedient manner where we're not kicking the can down the road or, or waiting too long for this. So I guess at the end of the day, my direction is that we hold steady right now. We keep looking at those numbers, and we revisit this as soon as we have a couple of weeks of hindsight of data proving to us that we're, we're looking at a much more stable landscape, and then we go for it. And if we have to go back to remote meetings for, for some other blip, we can do that. And we can come in and out of this pretty regularly moving forward if we have to. But for right now, I, I really do think after such a big surge, we need to be able to prove to ourselves with actual data and not just our, our optimism that we're seeing those numbers stay steady. So a little bit of both hands there from my perspective, but I'm okay with, with contextually looking at this and looking forward to getting back to those in-person meetings. I just want to see the data first. I'm kind of talking in circles now, Mayor. You can cut me off.
No problem. Thank you, Councilmember Assley. Councilmember Sweet?
So I'm definitely excited to go back to the hybrid model. I, I like the in-person meetings and giving our community the option to join us in person, I think, is important. However, you know, we've talked about looking at this at the COVID updates, and so I am happy to revisit this topic at the next COVID update and look at the data, and let's just see where the numbers are. So that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. And is there gonna be a COVID update on the fifteenth by chance? Or when would, when is the next COVID update scheduled for city manager, city clerk, or deputy city manager? I see it popping on here.
Yeah, Mayor DC, we are scheduled for each regular council meeting, so the next one will be the fifteenth.
Okay, excellent. Well, then let's revisit it and look at the data at that point. I will, and I just will reiterate, if we're opening up city council chambers to an outside organization to use them for, and allowing public participation and opening up those chambers otherwise, it really seems very logically inconsistent that we're not willing to do so for a hybrid model for ourselves, and each individual can decide whether they will be in person or not that is on council. But I'm trying to press the inclusivity that, and the standardization that we are not giving special privileges to organizations that have, let's be honest, have power, while not giving those same privileges to our own public and those who are residents of this community to be able to participate in our meetings that we are now allowing for the same individuals to participate in the transportation meetings. So just throwing out there, and we can revisit it on the fifteenth, but urging everyone to be logically consistent in this matter, because we all know too that our city council meetings, when we were doing a hybrid model, had a handful of individuals who are in the crowd as well. So I don't see that is any, going to be any different compared to this transportation meeting on the February eighteenth. So don't want to belabor the issue. I think you get the point, and we will pick this up on the fifteenth to determine whether the following week, we would be meeting in a hybrid model where members of council can decide whether to be in-person or virtual. With that, I am not seeing any further season cues in the chat box. So we are ready to move on to agenda item number eight, which is our council liaison reports. And let's just do roll call order. So we'll start with Vice Mayor Daggan.
Thank you, Mayor. The only update I have is that the Housing Commission unanimously approved the housing plan, and it will be coming before city council on February fifteenth, and I look forward to that discussion.
Thank you. To Councilmember Assley?
Sure. So I was able to attend the Virtual Sustainability Commission meeting last week, and it was fairly internally focused on protocols and some logistics. I did want to give everybody a heads up that, looking through my notes here. Here we go. One, one, one thing they did discuss was a new sustainable building incentive. So staff brought this forward to the commission. Just a heads up for everybody, this will be something that comes before. This will be something that comes before us eventually as well. And uh, it's just a series of proposed amendments to the residential sustainable building incentive so that it's more effective and, and better alignment with the carbon neutrality plan. And it would encourage, um, it would, it would provide developers with an increased residential density bonus in exchange for a whole package of sustainable building practices thing. So keep an eye out for that. Um, should be a really interesting conversation when it comes up. I think that's all I'll mention right now. Uh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. If uh, I start breaking up, put your hand up and I'll uh, turn my camera off. Uh, the only thing I'm going to mention is that tomorrow at ten o'clock will be the Metro Plan meeting, which of course is the Flagstaff Metropolitan Planning Organization. Most of the agenda is pretty routine, but one thing I thought I would call out is that we will be discussing the survey results that the Metro Plan has just completed. Uh, it was a large sample scientifically uh, constructed survey of both Flagstaff itself and the surrounding FMPO area, you know, like Donnie Park, for instance. And uh, there were some very interesting conclusions in there. So I would recommend that people take a look at that. Uh, you know, it'll be on the uh, Metro Plan website. And you can just look at the agenda for tomorrow and pick up that item. And there's a, a link in there that'll show you the survey results. Uh, very interesting results about attitudes towards um, you know, walkability, bicycling, uh, density. And it was interesting that the people of Flagstaff are more in tune with maybe some of the goals that I associate with uh, carbon sustainability compared to the outline areas that were, you know, they want bigger houses. Uh, and we're in Flagstaff, people are willing to accept smaller houses and for the trade-off to have better walkability. And, and so anyway, I won't belabor it, but it was, I found it to be a very interesting report. And I think it would be worth any of our times to take a look at it. Even if you only read the first two or three pages, which is the executive summary, that kind of tells you ver- summarizes very well what the rest of the large report has to say. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCarthy. Uh, Councilmember Solis.
Um, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well, with uh, in addition to the Metro Plan Board meeting tomorrow, I am doing double duty on behalf of Metro Plan and the statewide rural transportation advocacy council on which I represent Metro Plan. Cause tomorrow is the um, State House Transportation Committee hearing on House Bill two-three-nine-six uh, entitled Greater Arizona Transportation Projects. Uh, the bill calls for a one-time allocation of fifty million to fund specific projects in rural and greater Arizona. Uh, number nine on the project list is uh, Lone Tree Overpass. A direct allocation to Flagstaff for Lone Tree Overpass uh, to the tune of two-point-six million. So I'll be attending the State House Transportation Committee tomorrow afternoon on behalf of Metro Plan and, and uh, the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council. And uh, in attendance will also be uh, the ARTAC Chair uh, and from um, penal supervisor, penal supervisor Steve Miller, representing San Cordo Metropolitan Planning Organization. ARTAC Vice Chair and Gramm Supervisor Paul David, representing Southeastern Arizona Government's Organization and a represent- and a representative from NACOG. So I'm appearing to the committee to represent Metro Plan and ARTAC. I have invited uh, a council member Aslan and the Vice Mayor to join me on this lobbying trip because as they, they are part of the Metro Plan Board as well to represent Metro Plan. But that's a long day tomorrow and I'll actually be joining the Metro Plan Virtual Board Meeting in route to Phoenix. But this is very important uh, to uh, attend in person. Uh, so it's very valuable, especially when we're asking for, for uh, fifty million collectively to, to rural Arizona. The bill was sponsored by uh, Representative Tim Dunn and cost sponsored by um, Le uh, Majority uh, Majority Whip Leo Biesucci, uh, Transportation Chair Frank Carroll and our LD six repres- LD six representative uh, Walt Blackman. Um, also under Transportation Committee is uh, one of our rep- representative uh, from LD six Brenda Barton. So uh, and at this point, I also uh, ask maybe at the next meeting is to send a support letter to the State House Transportation Committee, to the State Appropriation Committee and pretty much the entire chamber of, of the, the House to, to support the less legislation of uh, House Bill two-three-nine-six. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Uh, I did want to ask in that regard um, is, are you representing the city of Flagstaff or Metro Plan? And uh, you're um, down south, heading to this representation?
Yeah, I ha- I am representing Metro Plan and uh, the Rural Transporti- Transportation Transport, Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, ARTAC. And we, we're, we have a specific ta- talking points related to this project, which was prepared by our ARTAC Executive Director Kevin Adam. And sp- and if, and if we get the chance to speak about our project uh, for Metro Plan, it's gonna, going to be the Lone Tree Overpass. And we have a talking point that was developed by Metro Plan Executive Director Jeff Miles that was already presented uh, way back in October at the Rural Transportation Summit.
Okay, thank you. And then so technically this is not a lobbying trip because we do have a certain order for invitations to an actual lobbying trip in which council members would be uh, chosen in that regard based on our order of appropriation rather than by an invitation specifically uh, in this regard. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The ultimate goal of this, this, this representation to dr- to the Transportation Committee is bring home the fifty million to rural and greater Arizona and two-point-six million specifically to Flagstaff for Lone Tree Overpass.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate your advocacy in this regard. It's extremely important for Flagstaff to receive these dollars. Um, but due to this not being a city uh, a, a city event, uh, so city funds will not be utilized since this is a Metro Plan um, situation and that the order of the lobbying trip then would not be associated with the city. Is that correct?
Yeah, I will be speaking on behalf of Metro Plan and ARTAC at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I just uh, wanted that clarification of uh, city funds as well as the proper, appropriate ordering of our lobbying trips, which are very important for ensuring that we have uh, proper representation and availability to all of us to be able to uh, uh, attend and in the proper order. So thank, thank you for the clarification. Uh, City Manager, I see you have your hands up.
Hand up. Thank you. And just in the interest of further clarifying, there will be uh, the use of a city vehicle uh, going to and from Phoenix in some city staff time. I do want to uh, clarify though that um, through recent history, this city has uh, provided resources to Metro Plan including uh, even officing in, in City Hall and the use of uh, city facilities. So there's, uh, there's been a pretty close connection between the two entities in terms of uh, sharing of resources and, and that continues. There's no hesitation in my mind that uh, Councilmember Solis is uh, there to represent ARTAC and uh, Mountain Line, but I do want to clarify that some city resources are being used in this uh, process. So thank you for letting me clarify.
Thank you, City Manager. And I do recognize that uh, you know, the, these dollars are, are very important to the city of Flagstaff. Again, I appreciate your advocacy, uh, Councilmember Solis. Just wanted to clarify on our rules of procedures as well regarding uh, specifically lobbying trips since that was uh, the specific wording associated. Um, but again, uh, just wanted that additional clarification. And uh, we are ready to move on for the liaison report from Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and do wave at me if my camera starts, starts cutting in and out as well. Um, but uh, not, not a whole lot for me to report. The Coconio County COVID-nineteen Partners Update and Operation Briefing occurred yesterday. Uh, it was a jam-packed meeting. A lot of us in that meeting, I was grateful to be there. It's been a long time since I've been part of that kind of a group update. And just really impressed by all the, the different efforts of the county. One of the big takeaways was that their epidemiologist was expecting there to be a sharp decline in numbers, which we know, but we'll, we'll see. I appreciate Councilor Aslan's um, desire to want to see the numbers. So that was one of the bigger takeaways, but I'm not going to go into any more details from the operation briefing. Uh, but I did attend it. And then the second thing I wanted to just bring up is that tomorrow, there's an Indigenous Commission Special Meeting at eleven AM. Um, it's going to be virtual. And then there's also a beautification and public art commission tomorrow evening from four to six. And, and there's going to be another meeting at the same time, which is the Transportation Commission, also from four to six. And so um, you could have two screens open, go back and forth. No, just kidding. But both of those meetings are occurring tomorrow evening from four to six. Uh, those were the only things I had to update us on. And, and Mayor, you know, I appreciate you, you bringing up your concerns about um, um, our lobbying efforts and such. And, and you reminded me, I saw that photo of you and Congressman O'Halloran. And I, you know, on the one hand, I was excited about that meeting and at the same time, I was wondering, you know, are we in compliance, right? Are we inviting the proper people? Is that a lot, is I, a conversation on behalf of the city? I don't know. Same questions, I guess, I, I also had pop into my mind when I saw that photo to bring up with you. Um, so maybe when you speak, you can talk to that. But um, I think moving forward, you know, I'm not trying to get into an argument here or any kind of like, you know, I don't know. All I'm trying to say, Mayor, is that like, maybe moving forward, what I would like to see if possible, um, and maybe you already tried this, was just that, you know, maybe what we can do is have like a, a quick text go off to the council members and whoever's available in the last minute fashion can join. Um, just so that there's at least one other, if not two with you. And I just think that would be better for the whole group at large. But um, other than that, you know, I'm glad that you're, you're ma- you're, you're communicating with those individuals and our representatives and such. I just want to make sure we're, we're following our, our, I think it's in our rules and procedures as well. But those, that's my update and, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. And I appreciate you bringing that up. I will note that there are actually at least three members of council that met with Congressman O'Halloran one-on-one this week. Um, and that I was specifically requested in less than twenty-four hours specifically to have a one-on-one meeting with O'Halloran. Uh, this was not based on my proactive trying to set up a meeting. It was a request that was not even uh, set up as a meeting, but for four hours beforehand. Um, but again, multiple members of council have had one-on-ones. And I just want to be clear, I think this is part of our jobs. It's important to communicate what's going on here at the local level. Uh, the one aspect that was a concern that I brought up before was specifically using the word lobbying trip, which uh, triggers specific uh, wording that is in our rules of procedure. Again, I appreciate our advocacy. We need to do work for the beha- on the behalf of the city to make sure other electeds and organizations know what we're facing to do everything we can as individual elected leaders to um, get the dollars that can really help our community. So I'm not against that. I just wanted clarifications regarding the wording and, and ensuring that uh, the, these kinds of things are above board, especially when city resources are involved, which also adds a different layer of uh, consideration. So I'll, I'll let you do that, but honestly, this isn't to me a big deal. We can move on and move on from our liaison reports. Uh, but since you do have your hand up, Councilmember Shimonie, just wanted to uh, give you the mic for a sec before we move to Councilmember Sweet's uh, liaison report.
Well, I appreciate that. You know, my first, my first thought is, where was my invitation? Congressman O'Halloran's office? What about me? Um, no, I'm, I'm partially kidding, but partially not, but I am kidding. But my point is uh, that, that's, that's good to know, Mayor, and I appreciate you sharing that insight with us. You know, I, I guess if, if that fine line isn't crossed and it's not lobbying, then yeah, communicate all day long, right? Communication's good. But um, I guess I do, do wonder where that line is at times. But um, yeah, um, respecting your desire to move on and also having that same desire, let's do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Uh, Councilmember Sweet, your liaison report?
All right. I have a couple of things. Um, this week I'm meeting with John Salt and Stahl to go over new priorities for NACOG. And I have on my calendar Valentine's Day, I get to spend it with the BPAC Commission. Um, and I enjoy, uh, invite all of you to join me. So that's what I'll be doing. Um, Councilmember Shimonie, you had mentioned tomorrow night, but I have it on for the fourteenth. So I'm not sure where that's coming from. But um, I look forward to uh, getting back into the swing of things and hearing what beautifying the, the commission's going to be doing. So thank you.
Excellent. Uh, thank you. And um, I'll just mention uh, I was able to attend at least the first part of the um, uh, Inclusion and Adaptive Living Commission, uh, which is held on Tuesdays. So a lot of the time it overlaps with our executive session. Um, but we did discuss the uh, library accessibility ramp as well as the uh, concerns regarding uh, the floodplains, Sunnyside barriers and all that uh, we are facing in the Grandview and Sunnyside neighborhoods regarding the museum flooding. And ensuring that we are very considerate of the fact that with all these barriers, with the sandbags, et cetera, that we are really understanding what that means for individuals who may be in wheelchairs or otherwise have um, issues with being able to get through over and everything else with the um, mitigations that have been put in place. So I, I'm glad that this is uh, a continued part of the conversation and that city staff has dedicated time to um, approaching that with the um, Inclusion and Adaptive Living Commission. So uh, with that, we are down to our um, appointments. And that is agenda item nine A to begin with is our Planning and Zoning Commission. And I would like to, just pulling up the order here. I do believe Vice Mayor Daggett is our uh, first individual to um, provide a nomination.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all of the residents who applied and to Commissioner Carol Mandino for your um, previous service and for reapplying. I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Carol Mandino to a um, seat on the Planning and Zoning Commission expiring December twenty-twenty-four.
Second, McCarthy.
I have uh, a motion by Vice Mayor Daggett follow, or seconded by uh, Councilmember McCarthy. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Uh, next is Councilmember Solis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to provide the space and time to thank every commissioner serving on every active commission we have. Thank you for your time, my grateful heart. You know, just dedicating your time and talent to serve the community. You know, just dedicating your time and talent to serve the community is very valuable. I also thank the applicants to, all the applicants to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for for offering to serve our community. With with that said, I am honored to nominate Bob Harris, the third to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term expiring twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Oh, I have a second from Vice Mayor. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And that leaves me with the final appointment assignment. And I would like to nominate Mary Norton Norton for a an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission expiring December twenty twenty-four.
I second that.
That's second. Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Council. We are down to Agenda Item nine B for appointments. This is the consideration appointment for the Housing Commission, which will be nominated by Councilmember Sweet.
All right. I would like to nominate Jackie Kellogg to the Housing Commission for a term expiring September of twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
I have that seconded by Councilmember Shumoni. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Now, I will, let's move, do our liquor license public hearing. And thereafter, we will take a short break before we go into the consent items and routine items. So this item ten A of the Liquor License Public Hearing is the Consideration and Action on Liquor License Application for Michael Joseph Bashah for Bash's number eighteen, twenty-seven hundred Woodland Village Village Boulevard. And Bash's number sixty-seven, one thousand North Humphreys Boulevard, number one-twelve, series nine liquor store, all spirituous liquor owner transfer. Staff recommended action is to hold the public hearing. So I would like to open that public hearing now. And if there's any staff presentation, please jump in here.
Thank you, Council Mayor Ryan Charlie with the Flexup Police Department. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the liquor license in front of you. I found no derogatory records with any of the applicants, nor the business. And I believe a representative from the company's prison as well, if you have any other questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a formal applicant presentation? Or is the just available for answering questions if necessary?
Mayor, a representative from the company is online for any questions that you might need answered.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, Council, do you have any questions to staff or the applicant? I'm not seeing any at this time. Is there any general public comment on this?
Mayor, we do not have any public comment on this item.
Excellent. With that, I would like to close the public hearing and move to forward the application to the state with a recommendation for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
That's seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. With that, it is four fifty-five. I would like to return here at five ten PM. And we will begin the consent items, followed by routine items thereafter. So, yeah, five ten PM, I will see you back here in a few. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, sports fans, it is five ten and ready to get back at it if we're, yeah, the crew's all together here.
Mayor, it looks like we are good to go.
Let's have a second here. Lights, camera. Action. All right. We are down to Agenda Item number eleven, which is our consent items. I move to approve all of the consent items as written, unless there is specific ones that members of council would like to pull out.
Unless there's objection, I second that motion, McCarthy.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Is there any further discussion? Give it extra few, an extra few seconds here if people are, yeah, rebooting to get on here. There is a motion on the table to approve all of the consent items placed by myself, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Brings us down down to Agenda Item twelve A. This is our routine items. Twelve A is the Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance Number twenty twenty-two dash oh one in ordinance of the City Council and City Flagstaff, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Flagstaff pursuant to the provisions of Title Nine, Chapter Four, Arizona revised statutes by annexing approximately ten point oh five acres of land located at seven thousand North Highway eighty-nine, which certain land is contiguous to the existing corporate limits of the City of Flagstaff and establishing city zoning for said lands as highway commercial with a resource protection overlay, providing for severability, authority of clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date. Staff recommended action is to read ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh one by title only for the final time. Uh, city staff?
Good afternoon, Mayor DZ Genevieve Parthree, the current planning section. I don't have a presentation prepared at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Council, do you have any questions at this time or comments? Just giving another second here. Councilmember Shumoni.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Genevieve. I was curious to see if any councilmembers had any comments. But I think what we should do, Council, is pursue a development agreement, a DA, before we read this ordinance for the second time, prior to that second read, and postpone that second read by by ten weeks to give us time. But, yeah, curious what other people think, but that's what I believe we should do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. As mentioned, at the last meeting about this, or the one before, I don't recall, but I would also be in support of that development agreement and or to delay this decision for a couple of months. So those are areas I am positions on project here at this time. I do see Councilmember McCarthy as a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm prepared to move forward with this tonight, as written and as we pass, you know, the first read. But I respect the wishes of council if there needs to be a delay, but I'm personally ready to move tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Sweet?
I would like to do a DA and also delay this for ten to twelve weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. I am in agreement. That does make three of us in support of such. We would need another member of council to proceed accordingly. As I monitor the season cues in the box. Vice Mayor Daggett.
I am in agreement about a development agreement and postponing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just to clarify with the city attorney, that that would need to be a motion then in consideration of these routine items. Is that correct? As opposed to a direction that you've already have four members on?
Thank you, Mayor DC Council Sterling Solomon, City Attorney. It would require a motion to postpone, I believe. There was a timeframe mentioned by Councilmember Shumoni when he first raised the idea, but that motion should include the the timeframe that you desire to postpone it for the motion maker and then whether or not that's seconded or approved. I would not recommend a motion to table, simply because our rules of procedure require you to pick up the item immediately the next week, which if that's what the council wants to do, I've heard ten weeks here, and that's why if you're wanting a longer period than one week, it would need to be a motion to postpone. And there are two separate ordinances, so it would be a motion to postpone, separate motions for each one.
Thank you for the clarification, City Attorney, and I will leave the floor to Councilmember Shumoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I go, I'd like to go ahead and move to postpone for ten weeks till for the second read and and implement a DA in that meanwhile to be brought back to council for that second read. And I think that's everything. And I guess I also part of that motion is to read the ordinance for the first time.
Thank you. And
Actually, if I could clarify on that, the the first read occurred two weeks ago, Councilmember Shumoni. That I just wanted to clarify, and Christina and Genevieve, I just want to make sure that's correct.
That is correct.
Yeah, so the motion wouldn't need to include a a motion for the first read. It already occurred.
So the
My bad, I apologize. Go ahead, Mayor.
No, no problem. So the motion then would be to delay this consideration for ten weeks and work on a development agreement accordingly during those ten weeks. Is that, just want to better specify the motion on the table?
Mayor, I believe that's correct, and I'll second that.
Thank you. I am getting notification that ten weeks from now is a work session. So would we like to move that to eleven weeks? And if so, you will have to withdraw your motion and restate it.
Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my motion and restate a motion to delay the second read, the final read, by eleven weeks and and implement a DA.
And then implement a development agreement. I second that motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed?
No, McCarthy.
Nay, Salas.
Thank you. I'm hearing a five-two vote. And we therefore will be bringing this forth in eleven weeks with a opportunity to do the development agreement in that timeframe. Which then brings us to routine routine item twelve B regarding a the same project in a different area. This is the Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance Number twenty twenty-two dash oh two in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, admitting the Flagstaff zoning map to rezone approximately one point oh nine acres of real property generally located at seven thousand North Highway eighty-nine, a portion of APN three oh one dash five zero dash zero zero five G from the highway commercial zone with a resource protection overlay to the rural residential with a resource protection overlay with conditions providing for severability, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date. Staff recommended that recommended action is to read ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh two by title only for the final time. And I would like to entertain a motion by Councilmember Shumoni.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to postpone reading ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh two for the final time by eleven weeks and integrate a development agreement into the plan within that eleven-week period.
I second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed?
No, McCarthy.
Nay, Salas.
By a five-two vote, the motion carries. With that, we are down to Agenda Item twelve C. This is the Consideration and Approval of Preliminary Plot, PZ dash two zero dash zero zero two on six dash zero two. Ben Fimbres requests preliminary plot approval for Fimbres Estates located at thirteen hundred West Lower Coconino Avenue, a six-lot, single-family subdivision on ten point oh four acres in the estate residential zone with a resource protection overlay. Staff recommends the City Council, in accordance with the findings presented in the report and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of approval, that was five zero, approve the preliminary plot with the following conditions. One, that a minimum front setback of fifteen feet be required for front-loaded garages and a minimum of ten feet be required for side-loaded garages. And number two, provide dedication language for a public trail or foots on track A with the final plot.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tiffany Antal, Senior Planner. I'm here with a short presentation tonight on this preliminary plot.
Thank you, Miss Antal.
Here we go. Can you see my screen?
Yep, good to go.
All right, this is the prelim- uh, request for preliminary plat for a six-lot subdivision from Ben Fimbres. This, the location of the subdivision is thirteen hundred West Lower Coconino. This is a single-family subdivision with six single-family home lots on just over ten acres in the estate residential zone, also within the resource protection overlay. Uh, staff has approved the preliminary plat, and it went through our inter-division staff and was finally approved on December twentieth of twenty twenty-one. This is a vicinity map of the location. You can see the subject site. It sits in between Flagstaff Mesa subdivision to the west. Lowell Observatory lands are located to the north. And just to the east is the original Flagstaff Townsite subdivision, um which dead ends basically into this location. In two thousand and ten, the subject property was rezoned from rural residential to estate residential to support this six lot subdivision. The rezoning was completed under the previous land development code and previous regional plan. The applicant, however, did not move forward to complete the subdivision until twenty twenty. This right here is the preliminary plat that you can see. Uh so it shows you the six lots. All of the lots meet zoning requirements. Um there is one stipulation, however, um as previously read by the mayor in terms of setbacks. However, this subdivision and the location of the building envelopes mirrors what was approved um back in twenty twenty, two twenty-ten. As part of the rezoning application, because these are steeply sloped lots, the building envelopes are pushed forward closer to the street. To reduce the amount of onsite grading that'll be necessary to support the residential development. In doing this, um working with the applicant and the IDS staff staff believes we can support um the reduced setbacks as shown on this plat map. So let's talk about the required findings. There are three. Um the first one is is that the development comply with the zoning code. The subdivision does meet the estate residential zone standards uh in terms of density. We're at point five nine, point five nine units per acre, uh which is within the estate residential range of one unit per acre. Uh the lot design and resource protection um is met using specific building envelopes. All of the lot size meet the minimum um size of one acre and all lots meet the requirements for minimum width and depth. In terms of setbacks, we've discussed that alternative setbacks are proposed to ensure that slope preservation. Also, in terms of uh resource protection standards, staff work with the applicant to harmonize between the land development code. Resource protection standards and today's current standards. So as best adhere with the ordinance and concept plan under that original rezoning. And essentially, in both instances, um whether we're looking at the land development code or whether we're looking at the current zoning code. The applicant comes into compliance. Um the required protection is a little bit lower for slopes under the land development code. But as you can see, under the proposed protection, um they far exceed what's required in the zoning code. So there is a substantial portion of the site that ends up being preserved and is even more preserved um by having those building envelopes moved forward on site. This is that resource protection plan, so you can see all the area in green is really the slope on the property. The forest resources are fairly evenly distributed throughout the slope. Uh we don't double count slope and tree resources. There's only just but a few trees located out of outside of a slope, and they will be preserved. Uh in terms of other relevant standards, a cultural resource clearance has already been approved by the Heritage Preservation Officer. Um and in terms of parks, open space, pedestrian bike facilities, the site is within a quarter mile of Old Town Springs. However, it's a very small park. It's less than an acre in size. And the specific bicycle and pedestrian facilities are not provided um as this is a rural road section, uh which currently exists. But public access is being maintained through the subdivision. Um so this the road that currently exists that travels through the Flagstaff Mesa subdivision. Does provide trail access up onto Observatory Mesa, so that will be maintained. I went too far. All right, so finding number two is engineering standards. So the proposed subdivision is in compliance with our engineering sys- standards, the public systems analysis conducted to confirm. Preliminary compliance with engineering standards. Um in terms of access and traffic, a TIA was not required for the subdivision. Because it is only six lots and access to the subdivision is via an existing private road section. For water and wastewater, there will be a requirement for a new looped water line. Um and the existing eight inch sewer line uh will provide a tap to each lot. In terms of stormwater, required improvements do include some detention facilities to limit the post-develop flow rates and a final drainage. Report will be reviewed with the final plat. The last finding is subdivision standards, so preliminary plat procedures and application requirements were met. The minimum required subdivision improvements have also been addressed. In terms of subdivision standards and regulations, the sub proposed subdivision needs lot design, street design, easement design, and block design. Um and with that, in terms of the findings, the city council shall find that the preliminary plat meets the requirements of the city code. In terms of the zoning code, the general plans and subdivisions, as well as engineering design standards and specifications. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, based on the required findings, did forward this preliminary plat by a vote of five zero. With a recommendation for approval subject to the two conditions. If there are any questions in regards to this case, I'd be happy to answer them. And I believe that Alicia Stoffers from Woodson Engineering is also here to represent this case.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember McCarthy has a question.
Thank you. Um Tiffany, could you bring up the map again and then show us on there where the foots trail will be?
Thank you, um Councilmember McCarthy. Um there isn't necess- it's not necessarily a foots trail. We're looking for that public. Public access dedication as this road is currently a private road through the development. That links to another private road uh within an existing subdivision. That same uh easement language has been provided on the portion of the road within the Flagstaff Mesa subdivision. Which then links up to trails up at the top of the hill um onto Lowell Observatory's property. This is also where they have recently um received approval for secondary emergency fi- or secondary fire apparatus roadway access.
So the public trail will be at the top of this. You know, if you followed this road around, it would go west and then north and then kind of loop around to the east a little bit. So the trail access is up there.
It's up here.
So. Yes. Okay, but then you told us that this is a private road. Does that imply that no one from the public is allowed to drive on that road?
So we are um we are obtaining an easement or we are obtaining rights through the subdivision plat. To allow public access on that roadway.
Oh, so so the public will be allowed to go on that road?
Correct.
Now, right now, and I haven't been up there recently, but I have. I'll admit it. I drove up that road. I'm a bad person. Anyway. That cul-de-sac has a sign about private property, thou shall not enter. So there seems to be a conflict between the sign that says private property, you cannot go in here. And what I'm hearing is that the public will have access at the top of this road. So that's doesn't seem to be consistent. How do we square that?
That's correct, sir, and this was an issue brought up. Um staff actually brought this issue up at. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, um and we have every intention to work with the applicant and their adjoining neighbors. I'm not sure actually who's responsible for the sign. To make sure that's adequately addressed. In the past, we have um dealt with issues um calls and complaints about people accessing the roadway. But currently, there is public access on the road on through the Flag Mesa subdivision. And we will continue it through this subdivision as well. So we'll continue to work with the applicant and hope to have that issue addressed before we get to final plat.
All right, so this is preliminary flat plat, and what you're saying is that. Council would still have the right to uh approve or reject the final plat based on that and other considerations. Is that correct?
Based on specific um requirements in the code and uh we could provide you provisions with um. That ex- the need for that accessibility, especially for bikes and pedestrians.
All right, so I guess I'll uh support this tonight, but I'll want to s- see how that gets resolved before we go to final plat. And I also understand that there's not really much parking up there, so it might only be for pedestrians and bicycles. So um. Okay, Tiffany, I appreciate your answer. I I do appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Uh any further comments or questions? With that, I um move to uh approve staff recommended actions. In accordance with the findings presented in the report and the Planning and Zoning Commission uh recommendation of approval. To improve the preliminary plat with the conditions that a minimum front setback of fifteen be feet be required. For front loaded garages and a minimum of ten feet be required for site loaded garages. And provide dedication language for a public trail or foots on track A with the final plat.
So I I will second that.
Shimoney Shimoney ba- beat you to it, Councilmember.
Okay.
Uh I have that sec- seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Uh is there any further discussion?
So the only discussion I'll say is that I will support this tonight, but there is a sort of a conflict between. The stated access to the trail and the fact that the sign says that it's private and nobody can go in there. And I that will need to get resolved before final plat, but I will approve. I will vote yes on this one. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I guess in terms of further discussion, um and question for staff is that. With the dedication language that a that it is a public trail or foots uh address uh Councilmember McCarthy's concerns.
It will definitely address a portion of it, but we want to make sure that the lang- that the language isn't confusing. Um it that signage has caused issues in the plast- in the past. And the police department has been involved in terms of trespassing issues, so we just want to make sure it's all clear to the public.
Thank you, Ms. Antal. Uh well, we do have a motion on the table. Uh is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We are now down to agenda item thirteen A of our discussion items. This is the museum flood project update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This is Andy Birdleson, your Water Services Director. Thanks for having us this evening. I'll just say a few words while Sam Beckett fires up the presentation, and it looks like he's already put it on the screen. With us this evening, we have uh our staff, the staff that you're used to hearing from, uh Scott Overton, Sam Beckett. Gary Miller um in Water Services, as well as Ed Schenk, and we also have um our Capitol folks on- online, as well as Bryce Doty. And uh some uh partners as well, Lucinda Andriani with the Coconino County Flood Control District, as well as Christopher Tressler. The Flood Control District Engineer. In fact, I just talked to Christopher. He was dealing with a situation out in um. Out in the Williams area, but he said he would try to uh get on the phone uh to work with us as well. So. With that, next slide, Sam. We were to give uh it's now February first. Uh we were queued up to to give this presentation at the end of last month. Uh our meeting ended up going a bit late, and so uh tonight um you you have us this evening. So first and probably what you'll want to hear uh about from Sam is the siren system and. So Sam Beckett, who was with uh Coconino County, is now our Streets um Director. We're lucky to have that coordination with him, so he knows knows a lot about that siren system. Sam, will you mind going back a slide? Uh so we'll talk about the uh siren system. Scott Overton will talk about our feasibility uh study. Uh Gary and Ed uh are online to talk about our sediment studies. Uh and then Lucinda um and Christopher um are online to talk about the sediment basins and and they're also working those on forest measures that we've heard so much about. For the work on National Forests for Sediment Reduction. Scott will also talk about the Killip Detention Basin. If you've been by that site recently. Uh you see a lot of uh activity, particularly last week, so we're very excited about that work. And then Sarah Langley um you uh will be talking about communications and public involvement, and we're so fortunate to have uh Sarah as part of the team. So, okay. Kicking it off to you, Sam. Thank you. Sam, I think you were gonna talk about the siren system, if I remember correctly.
Paradise and ending close to Route sixty-six, being spread to kind of the heart of the flood zone, if you will. These four sirens are gonna have some really cool functionality behind them. They will have um. Multiple tones that we can use for different uh alerting types. It will also have a voiceover function. In case we need to use that function, it will be able to translate into different languages, so it's a really versatile and uh. Kind of a really uh awesome piece. It's unfortunate that you have to implement something like this, but if you do, it's great to have all of the capacity that this this system has. Currently working with a lot of our engineering department, and we'll be working with some of our development department to make sure that we can get these into our right of way. Make sure they're all permitted properly and that we can get this up and running as soon as possible. There's been a pretty uh pretty aggressive timeline set on this, and it sounds like the vendor's gonna be able to support that and hopefully get us there in a very. Uh very short timeframe, so we're definitely excited about this. This system will be activated and triggered through the emergency notification system. Uh it won't be something that somebody necessarily has to sign up for. Uh this will just be in conjunction with the flood director protocols as we move forward. With that, I will hand it over to. It's like Scott Overton.
Thank you, Sam. Uh good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a point that we would like to spend a moment.
You.
Yeah, I'm off mute.
It's probably my fault. Apologies.
How's that look?
Scott, I I we. You're good.
Yes, it is audible, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, everyone. Uh good evening, Mayor and Council. Um the feasibility study is a piece I want to take a moment to speak to because we really are getting to a place in a juncture that is. Really at a point where it's pretty important, and uh if you recall, you approved a fe- approved a feasibility study with Peak Engineering. And Julie Leeds' team has been looking at our existing infrastructure throughout the wash, so they started at Route sixty-six. And they have addressed the wash of existing conditions from that location north into the actual wash, and they're gonna conclude their work at Top of Paradise. This work has really gone well. Uh they've walked the drainages. They've done a lot of analysis. Um I will say they've done a lot of math problems and a lot of flow calculations. And what they've now come back with is our first draft, and we did start that review right around the holidays. Uh we're now getting to uh what their recommendation is to increase and to maximize our existing infrastructure. It is appearing like it'll be a larger box structure from sixty-six to Killip. That infrastructure is still, you know, in concept. It's still being discussed, um but they are utilizing that existing footprint and. As we start to see these studies kicked out of the engineering group, um that will give us and you in particular the information we're gonna need. To make sure we're making smart investments, to really look at the existing infrastructure and understand what are its capabilities. What can it allow us to do? What's the cost benefit? And then how might we fund these segments uh which we're referring to from sixty-six to Killip? This work's been progressing nicely. Uh they also have focused a lot of effort on the Killip School site detention basins and the Killip School inlet. Design that is now getting underway. Uh they as well have started to look at the analysis at Dorothy, the Dorothy Crossing Cedar. And all the way up through Linda Vista and the Parkway Basins. Um remember, it's top to bottom. But it really is our opportunity to look not only at the existing infrastructure, but. Once that is completed, we will start to analyze the alternative infrastructure ideas. Those are the ideas that are on the table, but we have not totally vetted, uh that may just add or do something completely different with the existing infrastructure. Uh depending on the location. uh, depending on the location. So this is going well. Um, we're excited to see some of these drafts. We anticipate the next set of drafts in the next week or so. And uh, it has moved very, very well. So thank you to those engineering teams that continue to work there. The hydrology modeling, uh, we've also talked to that. That has also been completed. That was done at the year end. And we've now started to really start to look at that data. Um, this is that flow D model that allowed us to understand the depths of proposed waters and where they might be within the neighborhood. Um, that is the J E Fuller work that the county has been uh, leading the charge on, but that work really helps feed the information to the study. So wanted to spend a little bit of time on this because I think you're going to start to see some results come from this. And uh, we'll hopefully be able to share a little bit of those results next month with you in the next update, but I'm going to now turn it over to Ed and Gary who are going to talk sediment studies.
Thank you, Scott. So this is Ed Shank, uh, Stormwater Manager. Uh, good afternoon or good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm just going to give a brief overview uh, of the stem study that the Flood Control District commissioned from Natural Channel Design, one of our local consulting firms. The purpose of this study was to determine the continued flood risk, uh, or debris risk, I should say, uh, coming from the museum fire area and then also to help with our designs for future flood mitigation, including the sediment basins. As a reminder, we had about eleven thousand tons of sediment that was removed from Sunnyside and Grandview this last year, uh, mostly by Public Works. And a cost of roughly half a million dollars, uh, just in the tipping fees, um, at the landfill, not to mention uh, equipment and labor time. Um, so this, this study was to help uh, determine the future uh, risks that we have. Uh, Natural Channel Design went out in the fall and surveyed fourteen miles of drainage within Museum Fire Area and then down into Sunnyside. And with that uh, models or with that data that they had, uh, they used four different models to determine uh, the amount of sediment risk that we have. So two of these were hill slope models, uh, ermit, which is the erosion risk management tool, which is developed by the U S Forest Service, uh, the Rocky Mountain Research Center, and then uh, the Modified Universal Soil Loss Equation, which is a typical uh, soil loss equation produced by the Department of Agriculture. And then a channel model called the Bank Assessment for Non-Point Source Consequences of Sediment. Not sure why it's called that. Banks is the acronym. I guess they like the acronym. Uh, and then Sediment Transport Dual Model Flow Set Power Set, uh, which is a um, part of a commercial modeling package for applied geomorphology. Their results actually mirrored um, a concurrent study being conducted by Arizona Geological Survey up in the Museum Fire Area. Uh, what they're seeing is that the steep slopes are still very vulnerable and still have quite a bit of sediment that can be uh, produced and transported down into the city. Events, event based modeling, so rain based modeling, um, showed that for a one inch storm, uh, there'd be roughly four hundred tons of sediment produced. For a two inch storm, thirty-two hundred, and for a three inch storm, eighty-nine hundred. So that's, the eighty-nine hundred number was roughly what we saw um, from the four storms that we saw this, this uh, last year. The annual average with small storms, large storms, et cetera, that we would expect to see is up to seventeen thousand tons of sediment uh, being produced by the watershed. So obviously we still have quite a bit of flood risk, uh, due to the sediment itself being um, pushed into the city. Uh, the part of this modeling exercise, part of the study was also look at future conditions. So as the watershed changes and hopefully restores. Uh, and this went out for a five year time period. And at the end of that five year time period, we're still showing uh, a very high uh, risk of sediment and debris uh, movement into the city. So um, it's not predicted that we're going to see a, a sharp drop off in uh, sediment supply from the Museum Fire Area. Uh, the, the results uh, did recommend or the study did recommend continued monitoring, uh, which hopefully we can continue to do with Arizona Geological Survey and N A U. And the sediment transport models also indicated that restoration techniques that the county is hoping to uh, move forward on the alluvial fans um, should mitigate some of the sediment. That's the, the purpose that we're, we're going for with the, the Forest Service money and NRCS money. Uh, to the tune of roughly sixty to eighty percent of the annual load. So we should see a reduction once we have those mitigation uh, measures in place. Uh, the study did recommend alluvial fan work on the Forest Service properties, the forty acre private property in your museum, uh, Mount Elden Estates, sorry, and the city property near Parkway. So a total of nine sites that are already uh, underway in terms of design. Uh, the series of alluvial fan projects and sediment basins, uh, will work together uh, as a network to help uh, reduce the sediment load into the city. And uh, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the county. I believe Lucinda is going to talk a little bit more about the Parkway Sediment Basins.
Thank you, Ed. I, I see that uh, Councilmember McCarthy has a question on the sirens, so we can keep flowing with the sediment discussion or uh, Mayor, if, if you'd like, um, Councilmember McCarthy to ask his question now, we can do that as well.
Yeah, thank you. That, this is a appropriate transition. So Councilmember McCarthy, if you wanted to, uh, yeah, ask your question.
Well, thank you. I just had a quick question about the sirens. I hope that you will talk to the people that produce these and see if they needed to be uh, directed a little bit towards the ground level. My concern is if they're just by chance, a little bit towards the sky, they'll fill up with water, the water will freeze and the sirens wouldn't work. So I just, just kind of a heads up to think that through. I'm thinking like, this is a design review meeting. So thank you.
I can actually answer that question now if, uh, if you'd like, Mayor.
Yes, please go ahead.
Correctly, but I know um, he and uh, there's Sam. Hi, Sam.
Andy. Uh, yeah, so this is already something we've already considered. This company, as we get closer, has a complete design layout, uh, which accounts for weather. Noise carryover, they actually map out the range of which that siren can be heard from the height it will be mounted. Uh, there's actually a lot of science behind it, far beyond what I can, you know, understand, but they, uh, they make it sound very, very easy. But yeah, we're looking forward to uh, seeing how that maps out and uh, what the projections are going to look like moving forward. Uh, but we don't foresee any issues um, in that regard, but I do appreciate the comment.
Well, this is pretty typical. Whenever I have a question, staff's already figured it out. So thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Um, with that, we can move on to the wonderful Lucinda.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh, good to see everyone. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to do a brief update on the um, sediment reduction measures. Uh, as you just heard, we, we do have an opportunity to significantly impact the level of sediment entering the city. And I want to emphasize sediment. And debris is a little bit different dynamic and, and I think we, we, as we saw, we saw less and less debris. It's really sediment is the real key issue, although all these measures will influence debris as well. And I want to emphasize too, that, that the hill slope and, and looking at the study results and the comparison that we saw with, with Schultz. It was very interesting because a lot of the sediment was generated from the channels coming off the steep slopes of Schultz, whereas in this area, the hillsides are really contributing a lot and that, that is of even more concern if you, if you want to understand the impacts of sediment. So so anyway, to move ahead, efforts to address this, uh, you know, of course are both relative to the, the agreement now that has been completed with the U S Forest Service done in record time. Uh, and um, then the Forest Service has initiated the National Environmental Policy Act, the NEPA process. Uh, with the goal of completing that in early May. They're hopeful that there will not be opposition to the efforts on forest to, to again restore the watershed and reduce the sediment production and uh, capture sediment on the forest and keep it on the forest. So it restores those watersheds. And um, and that is the goal, is to complete that process by early May. Uh, we are nearing thirty percent engineering on that project. We're meeting with the Forest Service weekly to go through uh, the details of, of working through that project and so forth. Um, we did recently meet with the Mount Eldon Estates area, not only to talk about what was proposed uh, for the Forest Service property, which is very close to their properties, of course, as well as what's been proposed through the NRCS Emergency Watershed Protection Funding. And that was at high level because again, we have given, we just completed both agreements. Um, you know, we're, we're approaching thirty percent engineering on both of those elements. One thing, uh, in terms of that, the NRCS EWPP project, I think it's important to understand, I think we went through this last time, that there are two, we've kind of divided this up into two projects within the overall project. One project i- involves the work within Mount Eldon Estates, within Lockit Ranches and on the Forty Acres, all private properties. The, the, the second project involves the work that Ed just mentioned, the Parkway Sediment Basins element of that project. So we're seeing that as a separate project and I'll explain why. The Mount Eldon Estates and Lockit Ranches and the Forty Acres, the work there is really very, very similar to what we will be doing on forest. It's very, uh, I'll say traditional EWPP work, um, restoration of the watershed, the alluvial fans to capture sediment, uh, more grade control and cha- uh, resting the channel erosion through those areas, again, with the goal of reducing the sediment coming into the city and impacting those areas as well. And then the second piece again is the Parkway Sediment Basins and this is turning into a very complex small, frankly, a fairly small scale project, but turned into a very complex project. Um, we have uh, land rights. We've been working with the city attorney's office as well as with Bryce Doty, uh, your land rights, um, and acquisition um, representative and been working through that process and what that's going to look like. I think you're aware of that. Second, as I mentioned before, there is a section of the historic Beale Wagon Road that is on that section of, is on that project land, uh, land owned by the city. And um, we are working with the State Historical Preservation Office to, to ultimately um, arrive at a, what's called a memorandum of agreement. Uh, that MOA will be signed by the city as well as the district, as well as NRCS, the State Historical Preservation Officers, and then potentially other properties owners that are adjacent to or, or involved in this project. So we're working through that process right now. They have initiated that process with their consultation uh, effort. And uh, that's moving forward and that's being basically overseen by the NRCS archaeologist. In addition to that, we also are working with the Army Corps of Engineers, um, a favorite friend of yours. And uh, it, this will require, uh, currently this is considered a waters of the U S and this will require a permit. Fortunately, the NRCS Natural Resources Conservation Service has a standing permit. It's called Permit Thirty-seven, number thirty-seven. And um, we are working with them to, through with, and again, hand in hand with NRCS to pursue that permit, uh, to gain the approval from Army Corps to go forward with the project as well. And um, that will require properties that are directly impacted by that project as well as any projects upstream to, to be um, involved in approving that as well. So um, so that's another complexity to this process. The um, and then, and then of course we'll have to go through a procurement for, uh, process to secure a contractor for the sediment basins project as well. So my expectation relative to the Parkway Sediment Basins, given the complexities, the, the expected timeframe for construction is fall of twenty-twenty-two. I think just given all the dynamics, trying to get this, I mean, we're going to make every effort to try to get into construction and get it completed before the monsoon, but I think it's, frankly, at this point, I think that's unrealistic. And so, uh, but it would be slated for as soon as monsoons dissipate, we would go into construction in the fall. So uh, the other element of that project of the NRCS project as well as the Forest Service project, we, again, our goal remains to have that, those elements completed before the monsoon season. And we're again, working really diligently. A lot of weekends and nights to, to ensure that we can get that done uh, prior to monsoon. Of course, there's no guarantee whether will have a tremendous impact on how quickly we can begin construction. And how, when we have to end, given start of monsoons and so forth. So but we've got a lot of experience with those projects and um, uh, we have an experienced contractor that will be implementing that element of, those elements of the project with Forest Services as well as NRCS. So um, we, we're again, being very, trying to put every effort we can into getting that, that com- that completed uh, prior to monsoon. I think that is it. Again, we have a lot of complexities to the sediment basin project, but you know, that's what comes with projects. You have to work through them and those, those challenges and uh, we intend to do that and uh, be able to complete that uh, this fall. So uh, with that, that's a pretty high level and, and quick uh, re- review of the project and certainly happy to answer any questions at whatever time that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm not seeing any Q's and C's in the uh, chat box at this time, so we're good to proceed.
Thank you, Lucinda. We really appreciate both your and Christopher's expertise and, you know, the willingness to work through this project with us. We know you've been at the table with us and it goes without saying, your project, that location is much more complicated than even this next one we're going to talk about. But um, we've really appreciated all the efforts. Um, Mayor, I did see a question come in by Councilmember Shimonie. If we want to grab it or wait, I'll defer.
Yeah, that's uh, Councilmember Shimonie, uh, please go ahead.
Good man, and good evening, Luc- and the team. Uh, thank you for the presentation so far and thank you for all your, your, your work, Lucinda. Um, I'm leaving my camera off because of bandwidth issues currently, but uh, I just had a quick question. So in, in regards to the delay in the effort being done before um, monsoons, realistically, I'm just wondering, do, is there a plan in terms of how to, how our plan, I'll reach and let the community know, just to manage expectations?
Yes, uh, absolutely. I think once we, within the next couple of weeks, I think we'll have a much better sense of, we have a, a key meeting later this week, uh, with uh, NRCS archaeologists on the Beale Wagon Road element. And uh, Natural Channel Designs is, is working through an effort with the Army Corps right now. I think within the next couple of weeks, we will have a clearer picture about the timeline relative to, to all the projects, but particularly relative to the sediment basins project. And I think at that point, we'll be prepared to communicate. We did send a letter to those in that, the area of the sediment basins project to let them know that site work, um, investigative work for the engineering would be underway. Um, went out and did some geotech, took some samples and so forth, uh, to be able, so NCD can continue with the engineering while the other processes are taking place as well. And I think at that point, right now, um, you know, we did include some of these issues uh, in, in the letter, but right now it's still somewhat speculative. So I, I prefer to wait about till we have a little more confidence in our information before we, we start communicating, but certainly we'll be working with, with Sarah um, on those communications. But certainly, we'll be working with, with Sarah on those communications and, and moving forward. And what's really important in this process is that those whose property would be directly affected by the projects, irrespective of, again, where they are, whether it's a Mount Eldon Estates, or Lockit Ranches, or in Paradise area, they need to be met with first, and they need to understand what's going to take place relative to their specific property. Because we'll need either in our, in case of Mount Eldon, a cooperator agreement, or in the case of the Paradise project, the city's going to need an easement. And so we want to work with them first, so they understand, okay, what is planned, what is the impact on my property, and, and we can work with them to secure, ultimately secure those agreements, right, that, those instruments. So, so that's really critical. We don't want to jump out and start communicating with the entire community until they've had an opportunity to really understand what's going to happen with their property. And, and then we will communicate to the entire community. And, and we've just found, we found that through Schultz, we found that today. You know, we need to respect that their land is being impacted, and that they should have direct communication, one-on-one, face-to-face in the community, out, out on the land, right, to see it and understand, what does this mean to my property? So.
Thank you, Lucinda. I really appreciate that approach.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Lucinda, for being here, and thank you, Councilmember. So this next project, if you've been by, is Killip Elementary School. It's going well. In fact, this slide is a little bit dated. You all are aware and recall the IGA. Adam Mealy's been our project manager from, our senior project manager with Public Works, who's working with Stormwater and Ed Shank's team to deliver the Killip Detention Basins. Please recall that FUSD is actually delivering the project. We're assisting and providing a substantial amount of funding, but this is a really integral piece, and the mass excavation is well underway. We have encountered some rock, but they've been navigating, dealing with that, and Adam's done a good job of working with the school district to try to come to some resolution. So we're hopeful that by next month, we'll have that resolved. Now, our focus really is to move the engineering team's efforts towards the Killip School inlet structures at Ponderosa Park, and how we're going to move the water from Arroyo Seco into these detention basins, and then the final connections between the actual basins and Third, Third Street to the east. Again, we'll start that piping project that goes in front of the new elementary school, tied into the existing system. But all good news on this front, no concerns to report. Everything's moving very well, and this will be in place and ready to function prior to this year's monsoon season. Next slide, Sarah, you're up.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director, wanted to finish off this presentation with a quick update on our communications efforts. So the city's second FAQ document was emailed out to the museum flood distribution list on January 14th, a few weeks ago, and that answered a lot of the questions that we received by email from residents over the holiday, New Year period. We also received a few more questions last week by email from a resident, so we are working on answering those as well. So that's kind of an ongoing process. Additionally, we've also started advertising these museum flood updates to the city council on our social media channels and through the email distribution list, just to make sure that impacted residents know that these updates are happening, and they can, you know, join us or watch them later at their convenience. And then, moving forward, we are working with Beta PR to start implementing the deliverables outlined in our contract that council approved about three weeks ago now. We're currently finishing up our website, and we're targeting early next week around, I believe, February 7th to go live with that website. We're just waiting on a few last pieces of Spanish translation and a few more design elements for that. So that website will feature overviews of the different projects that you just heard about here, and it'll really act as a repository for all of the previous information we've released on museum flooding, and be an easy place for residents to watch previous council updates and things like that. Additionally, we're also planning to send out a, our first project update flyer early this month, early February. The purpose of that flyer will be really to advertise our website, to get people to sign on to our email distribution list if they haven't done that yet, and then to provide a quick introduction to the city's key infrastructure projects, again, that we talked about tonight, within the museum flood area. So that's a brief communications update, and this is our last slide. So with that, I'm sure our group is happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the update. A lot of great work being done, and looking forward to continuing to see the productivity on this. We do have a public commenter that I'd like to take before we move into council discussion and questions. So, City Clerk, if you'd like to line them up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. We have Dawn Rodriguez on the line. Dawn, you may go ahead.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for listening to me today. Since there are no pre or post-flood reports specifically at Dorathea, I'll tell you in three minutes what happened, why it happened, and how to fix it, and all for free. The second edition City of Flight Staff Museum Flood Question and Answer is explaining that the floodwaters follow the down gradient and at times are also impacted by currents created by bottlenecks. This is one of those common knowledge engineering standards that we have been worrying about for the last 18 years. The water changed direction from north to south to east to west and west to east in the alley, sending half the flow of the Colorado River through people's homes. My testimonies are built on videos and eyewitness accounts, not unreliable expensive models. There are no thousands of dollars of tech equipment and gauges at Dorathea, just old school water lines and common sense. The water line shows that the water easily reached over 10 feet high at this drain. Residents were warned of water, not seismic cement mud, that prevented the free flow of water through any type of fence, including chain-linked fences. An unprecedented situation, never described in Arizona court cases or statutes, was further aggravated by the upside-down, unregulated box bridge design, following basic rules of engineering, if the building of an inferior dam and bearing the neighborhood in water was the goal. The dam wasn't built as high as the Arroyo Seco precautions, and sandbags were used instead of Jersey barriers. So when those sandbags buckled, 1% of the 11 tons of mud mentioned was directed through homes that never should have been affected on this scale. This millions of dollars mistakes ruin countless lives, and I'm here asking for it to be resolved by the following three options. The first option, build the box bridge already at Dorathea. The second option, open the road, move out all the Jersey barriers and sandbags, so the water does not travel against gravity. The third option, and our personal favorite, because we have never been more at peace since the road has been closed, tear up the road and make it part of the alley for good. We have tried sharing this information in private, but we were, we were told no. And if we have learned anything over the years, it is to include the most people to find better solutions. Also, the project in the alley, I'm not sure what they're doing, but it hasn't, we were supposed to hear from, from the realtor person in January, the first week of January, and just FYI, it's February, we haven't heard anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Was there anything you wanted to add regarding the not hearing anything or steps forward?
Yeah, well, nothing to add, but I gave three solutions there. I, I know, I only get three minutes. You know, I'm doing, like, everything that these, like, 15 people are doing, I'm doing by myself, and I only get three minutes, and I can't do presentations. So I, yeah, I have a lot more to say, but it's, it's not, so I gave three solutions. And to better explain it, because I know people might be confused, I've offered tours and stuff, but a lot of the problem is that there's a drain on Dorathea, and so when it plugs up, and this mud, it was in the newspaper, it's seismic mud, it's insane. And, and I know, thank you for everybody for doing all this work, and I know you guys have a lot of work, but I, I think I have a pretty good control of the situation, and, and I'm doing this, like, on weekends and stuff. So, I mean, thank you, but I think, I think more could be done. So my question is, they were going to do something in the alley. Is that, whatever they were going to do back there, is that still going to be done?
Thank you, Dawn. We'll, we'll definitely be asking that question during the council cues and discussion. Just, I just really appreciate you always speaking up, providing the information of what's happening on the ground, because that is an extremely, extremely important component of this, not just models and figures and dollar amounts, but the lived experience so many are facing. So I just, I just want to say thank you for always providing that perspective to us on council through these meetings. Vice Mayor Daggett does have a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dawn, so much. Can you state your number two point? Again, I was taking notes, and I didn't get number two.
Dawn, you are muted.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. My number two point, so when the drain gets plugged in the alley with that, that seismic mug that was in the newspaper, it moved everything up. That's why at, at Linda Vista, they measured like five feet. Where we are, it was over 10 feet, because that drain got plugged, the water, the mud plugged it. So it turned into a dam, because then it, it moves the water up. So the way that the sandbags were arranged, and they, they put sandbags when they should have had Jersey barriers like they did, they reinforced it at Arroyo Seco. So when they, they did that inferior dam, it busted up. And so we've never had flooding like this, and I know they're going to say, you know, the fire and this and that. But when my husband would clean out the alley, he did it because our babysitters lived on Rose, and so they would say, you know, your daughter's scared, there's waters. So we never flooded. I never made that point clear. We never flooded. So if they go, if we play by the rules that the engineers are saying, that you can't prevent the, you know, you, you can't put up barriers, then they shouldn't be building dams. So if, if the first one was, of course, the box bridge, the second one was just to move everything out and let the water flow. It's an alluvial fan. Move, don't be, you have to account, if it's bottlenecked there, you have to account for the westerly flow, the easterly flows, and the alluvial fan. You can't make a dam and then have the people from, I mean, it backed up, Council, it backed up from Dorathea all the way up to Cedar. And if it was open and there were no, just move everything out. That's the second thing that, that, that I'm asking.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn. And Vice Mayor Daggett. I'm not seeing any further season cues for Dawn at this time. Do we have any further commenters on, on this agenda item before we go to discussion and questions for staff?
No, Mayor, that was our last one.
All right. Thank you, City Clerk. Well, with that, let's open this up for discussion amongst council and answer any questions that we may have for the presenters. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for all of the presentations. I have a question for Sarah, and, and possibly for, for Lucinda as well, but I'll ask it, and you all can fight over who answers it. Sandbags, old sandbags that need to be removed, and the new sandbags that need to be placed. What is our communication plan and our volunteer plan for making that happen before monsoons?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll let Scott and Lucinda answer that, and then I can jump in with any communications support needed. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I think we'll get some support here from a couple different angles. This is certainly a timely time to ask that question. We have started our internal discussion to start thinking about what it looks like to shore up short-term mitigations. We know there's anxiousness to try to understand that better today. I think you're going to find that it's going to look very similar to the way it's looked the last couple of years. Some of those requests are going to be made again, as a lot of our mid- and long-term mitigations are not completed, and it's not proven up to be totally successful quite yet. So we know there's effort ahead. I know we just spoke about it at our Monday engineering meeting, that we need to start thinking this through from the operations side of the house, and we're going to have to communicate what our expectation is, what the role of both agencies, including the flood district, might be. But those are conversations that we have not had to date for this coming monsoon season. Andy, Lucinda?
Yeah, I think that's a good summary, Scott, and, and I, and I think we're in the process. I think we've all identified there's a set of meetings that need to occur. I think probably the first one will involve Andy and Scott, and the city manager, and county manager, and myself, and, and to sit down and talk high level first about where are we going with the mitigation efforts for this summer. You know, who's going to take responsibilities for the various elements of the process, the EOC process, all of that work, make sure we're all on the same page, and then lay out the actual plan for that, and then be able to communicate that, much like we've done the last two years. But as Scott indicated, you know, the emergency measures that have been put into place should be kept into place, because we will not mitigate all flood events, and that's important. You know, I had a set of residents provide some additional video and photographs from Mount Eldon Estates area. We, you know, we want you to know at this event, this happened, this happened, and absolutely, we want to understand what, what happened. If we're not there, most of it, we're pretty aware of. But, you know, I reiterated with them, we cannot mitigate every flood event. That, that just isn't going to happen, and it, it would be hundreds of millions of dollars. So, you know, making those decisions, we, you know, the city is on the right path in terms of putting together a, a good process that's going to have a set of projects that are going to come out of this, that will help mitigate those more frequent type of storms that we see. The big, big storms, it's still going to be really challenging, and for the entire flood area. And that's just something we're going to live with, unfortunately, for a long time. So.
Do you all foresee the city and/or the district being on hand to help remove the debris from broken sandbags and, and sandbags that need to be replaced? I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is we foresee helping the residents to get rid of what they need to get rid of, and to reset bags that they need to reset, correct? There's going to be help for them.
So remember that over the last two years, in terms of the support, you know, we've had, we've had, we've utilized Arizona Conservation Corps and, and volunteers to assist people who are, we call it AFN, that are, that are, have physical challenges, disabilities, elderly, we've supported that. To support those who are able-bodied, we've provided, we've distributed the bags throughout the neighborhoods and have distributed, the city's distributed dumpsters where those can be deposited, the old sandbags and old materials, you know, whatever, you know, things related to that, not garbage, but can be deposited. So I, I see it, again, being very similar again this year. And, and in terms of, you know, what we can support here, we're, we're walking, you know, a line of level of resources, gift clause of the state statutes. There's a number of fine points we're walking here to help support people as much as we can, but also people need to take responsibility as well, and, and a neighbor helping neighbor, you know, we certainly intend to. But also people need to take responsibility as well and and a neighbor helping neighbor, you know, we still certainly intend to. Fully utilize and and work with United Way to mobilize volunteers, which has been very successful, as you know, you've been out on the ground on mo-. Pretty much every one of those e- events, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, 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 sorry. And then Sarah, how and when will we be communicating this to the residents?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I think as soon as um, you know, we have a a clear and consistent message after those meetings that Scott mentioned take place, which will be. Um very soon, we can um work with the county, um we have close relationships with their communications folks. Uh so we can make sure that we're staying consistent there and and really use all the channels that we have available. Um whether that be, you know, email, um door-to-door campaigns to let people know about various resources, social media. Um all those different things, so we can definitely put together a a plan to get that word out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor, and and thank you all for the presentation again. I don't really have many questions or any really at all. I think you all are doing a good job. And I appreciate that. My only comment really is kind of just in line to to Vice Mayor's comment about um sandbags. You know, when we do decide to move forward, I'm just thinking if it might be a good idea to, you know, engage the university athletes. Uh high school athletes, you know, Greek life, different clubs. I know that we have a lot of student power, and if that's helpful at all. Uh that's definitely a resource that, you know, if 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 there's help needed in tapping into. I I might be able to assist with that, but um if that's something we're already doing, I I know that we've had those partnerships in the past. I'm just trying to think about, you know, how to make our work easier and leverage that that human power that we have. Uh in our youth and our student population, but I know you all are thinking about that already, so just wanted to add that uh that comment, and and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Do you wanna jump in?
Yeah, just wanted to comment, um back to Councilmember Shimoney. Um definitely, we're already thinking about that, and um we've thrown that idea around with our neighborhood liaison, Valeria Chase. Um to see how we could kind of um link up and and get students more involved in service projects such as this. Um so we'll definitely be utilizing those channels as we move forward. Thanks.
And and Councilmember Shimoney, uh thank you for the question and the comment, and it really does get to um promoting that neighbor helping neighbor environment. Um we had several members of the athletic teams from N A U. Making sandbags at the County Public Works facilities, and that production. Uh was such that it allowed us to get the sandbags into the community where they were most needed. Also, with the United Way volunteer efforts, I know um our city manager Greg Clifton was out, you know, on those efforts, helping people. Uh muck out, so to speak, all that debris. A- and the sediment basins that Lucinda's talking about on in those on-forest measures, it's it's not just the. The flow of floodwaters, but it's also that debris impact. And um we have to be really careful as a local government. Um as Lucinda had mentioned, when when we engage directly on private property, and I think we've we've managed that really well, where. We can help organize or contribute to those efforts. In a way that doesn't get into any of those gift clause type issues that we can experience, but organizing those. Uh those neighbor helping neighbor events and those community events. Um we had both of the athletic teams from Coconino and. Flagstaff High School, Coconino uh High being directly impacted uh just right outside of that flood area. And it also helps us get the word out to the community when we have community members. Involved in that area, so many people I I heard from that live on the west side, so to speak, said, I had no idea. And um a- and so it really is probably. In thinking about the natural disasters that our community has faced over the last however however many years, as long as I've been here. This is probably the biggest one that we, the city of Flagstaff, has faced. Um and um and and so i- it's just something that um. Uh if we can get the entire community involved, it's super helpful to to have that effort going forward.
Thank you, and uh with these discussions, I'd like to be able to kind of set a timeline for it. Um so we are likely, I mean, I drive by Grandview and Linda Vista in that neighborhood. Near daily. Um I'm expecting we are going to have to replace over a hundred thousand sandbags this year. You know, that's a minimum. That's three million pounds of sand we have to get rid of and replace. And uh with that, I would like to aim for starting really in earnest the first week of April. To start replacing sandbags, organizing volunteer efforts around that, or at least, you know. Having United Way act as that intermediary, but I want us to be conscientious because um. As we know, fire and flood season is gonna be right up in front of us uh very quickly. And we need to replace a lot of these bags, so let's. Make sure we're giving us enough bandwidth and starting it that we can get those uh sandbags replaced with volunteers. Before those uh floods really start in earnest, so. Wanted to throw that out there and or learn what your timeline expectations were uh for replacing those sandbags.
I will just share that we have seventy-five thousand sandbags at County Public Works. Um y'all say ready for deployment. Um and certainly we can make more. Um I actually asked Sam, Sam coordinated this effort last year. And um typically, fairly soon, we would do an assessment. Um and and I think it's important to also understand that over the last two years, three years, two years. We have replaced bags sequentially, right, so. Don't have to go in and replace all of them, but there, I agree, I think there's gonna be a substantial number. A lot of those, you know, that they they typically have around a three-year life and and here in our territory. Their life is shortened by uh U V exposure as well as the snow. And freeze-thaw cycle, so. Um you know, we've got a a significant effort, you know, that we'll do, and I know we've already had conversations and. Sam has identified uh resources both for the city to contract and the district to contract. Uh uh with the conservation corps coming into this spring. Um and they can both be deployed again to support those that have physical needs. Uh but also to make sandbags, so um and if we identify, there may well be some other resources. You know, COVID has also affected, I mean, we, in nineteen, we used the. The D O C crews, fire crews, were, they are exceptionally productive. And uh so, you know, we can try to reach out and secure some of those resources again as well. They may or may not, they have not been available. Both because of fire and because of uh COVID over the last two years or or um so. So we have some resources, but, you know, it may. It may be that it largely rests with the community responding and supporting, you know, neighbor to neighbor, so.
Yeah, and I just uh thank you for that. I just uh wanna make sure that we are doing our part to help organize or initiate that process, really. Um I mean, I'm just thinking about when I when I look down Grandview, all of these torn-out bags, this isn't just a matter of replacing it for the protection of those individuals. I'm thinking about how much sand and debris is gonna be running into Sunnyside to clog up the inlet and other areas if we do not replace them. So uh to me, I know we got the gift clause, we have the private property aspect. But there's also the fact that this sand is gonna go somewhere if it's washed away, and it will clog up our system downstream if. Uh you know, we. We collectively, neighbor to neighbor, governments, whatever else, uh don't get a handle on it preemptively. And really, when we are talking, you know, we put out, what, seven hundred thousand sandbags, well, a hundred thousand that we need to replace. Double that amount of time to get rid of what is already there. We we just need to be conscientious of the time because um I don't wanna roll around and. You know, starting the end of May, we start this process up to clear these out and replace them. And not have the time and resources to fulfill that before the monsoons hit. So just throwing out there, and I mean, these things happen a lot quicker than. Uh right around the corner than what we're really thinking about is all as we think about snow plowing efforts right now, for example, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So appreciate all the efforts and all the hard work on this front, and we'll just keep up the. Uh tenacious efforts that we have been seeing from staff, volunteers, and everyone else. So. Uh with that, any further uh comments or questions from City Council? I'm not seeing anything further. Thank you for the, all the efforts, the presentation um and discussion uh regarding the. Museum flood projects. With that, we are down to our agenda item number fourteen. A, these are our future agenda item requests. And the first is a future agenda item request from myself uh to place on future agenda a discussion regarding the development. Of a rainbow-colored pedestrian crosswalk. So I guess with that, I will um present this idea more thoroughly. And we're seeing this in many, many other cities, um either. Already in place or in the process. And uh including within Arizona for uh cities that have our sta- same engineering codes, so. Phoenix and Tucson have a rainbow-colored crosswalk already established. Tempe is in the process of doing so. And I think this would be a great way to um show our support, show our. Um encouragement to a more inclusive future and more inclusive city. Uh particularly with not just a rainbow-colored pedestrian crosswalk, but that would be resembling of the traditional pride flag. But the uh progressive pred flag, so this is far more inclusive. Um and if you've seen it before, it's not just the rainbows, there's a triangle on the left side of also black, brown, et cetera, associated. Um I would really like to see us as a city embrace that inclusion, similar to other cities. Uh to embrace our, the the recognition that um. We need to progress forward, we need to make sure that people who are maybe. Different than ourselves feel a part of our community through very important uh symbols. So with that, I am uh asking City Council to place on the future agenda. Um the painting of a rainbow crosswalk in general. In particular, I would like to see that to uh across from from Wheeler Park. To City Hall, that main crosswalk right there. Though I am open to other suggestions, I just would like to see our uh a real symbol symbol of inclusion um in this regard. And I do see Councilmember Shimoney as a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Um uh this fair, uh thank you for bringing this up. I would just also add that, you know, when we do discuss this. Maybe we also consider somewhere on the east side, along Fourth Street or something like that, we can talk more about that later. But yes, thumbs up from me.
Thank you, and I know we'll have to go through engineering and all of that bit and assessments, so. I'm just caring today that we are able to move it forward and we can discuss locations as preparations potentially may be able to. Uh move forward, so uh Vice Mayor Daggett?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would support having this conversation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh Councilmember, speak.
Thank you. I support this as well. Thanks.
Excellent, well, thank you, thank you very much. Um I really appreciate the support in moving this forward. Uh which we do have council direction. Uh Councilmember Salas, did you wanna chime in?
Um yes, Mr. Mayor, Roy DeBibb.
Thank you.
Or, yeah, I remember that from, gosh, teaching my kids their rainbow colors.
Yep.
Red, orange, yellow, green, blue, and indigo, uh indigo and violet.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Yes, I I I have been, I have taught my little ones the very similarly. Um well, I I just wanna say thank you for the support and moving this forward, and I look forward to the future discussion. I will also just note that if this does move forward, I think it would be really great. Um from the staff side of things, if this could be um. Prepped for June first, if we do decide to move forward uh in recognition of Pride Month. I think that uh being able to establish that before then or an unveiling on that day uh would be. Our community, so uh we'll we'll pick that up, though, and discuss it uh on a future agenda. Uh we have the uh majority of council support, so thank you very much. With that, we are down to agenda item uh fourteen B. This is the future agenda item request from Councilmember Aslan to place on a future den- agenda discussion regarding the development of a council member evaluation process. Um Councilmember Aslan, if you'd like to introduce your affair.
Thank you very much, and just for the record, I knew I was coming online here in just a second. I wanted to express my support for the previous agenda item as well. So, yeah, a council evaluation, I'm not sure that's the 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 only or best way to phrase it. What I'm looking for is a a voluntary process or methodology or procedure that's in place at the city. Um for council members to receive anonymous constructive feedback uh for our own professional development purposes. You know, it goes without saying that every four years or every two years, uh we get to be evaluated by the voters. And that's not what this is about by any means. You know, as as a young, as 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 a young elected official. Um someone who is trying to find my own way in this professional landscape. I am always um eager for constructive feedback and for conversations that lead to. Uh better awareness and better understanding of who I am and and how to be professional and how I'm perceived and how well I get along with everybody. And those conversations do happen. They're a little bit organic, uh you know, when you when you seek them out, they happen more often. Um anyway, we have a system in place to evaluate our uh city attorney, we have a system in place to evaluate our. City manager and all of our leadership and all of our employees down the ladder. Get to be evaluated as well. And uh you know, there's a particular relationship or a it's it's a particular thing being on council. You don't always get direct feedback, um even when you're asking uh for honesty and transparency from people. There's a certain, I don't, I don't know what the, how to, how to characterize it, but there's a certain hierarchical. Uh relationship there that an anonymous process might be able to. Um bring a little bit more clarity to for those who are looking for honest uh evaluation. So again, this is something, if we move forward with it, I'm sure H R can can find some best practices. May- maybe there's some ways that this is being done in other communities. I would uh support it being voluntary, I I if if a councilperson or or someone on the council doesn't wanna be evaluated. Fine, they don't, you know, this doesn't have to feel like a threatening process to them. What I'm saying is, I would appreciate some professional feedback from my my peers. Um and my colleagues, uh both on council and at the leadership level. Uh so that I can become a better public servant to the city of Flagstaff and. Uh frankly, someone who's easier to be around for for everybody. Um and so that's where this is coming from. And I'm asking for your support just to make this available possibly uh for those who are seeking out that kind of feedback. And uh I'm happy to make this an open conversation. If you have further suggestions or if you wanna. Try to clarify things in your own way or ask me clarifying questions, please go right ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Uh I do see Councilwoman McCarthy has a comment, followed by Councilmember Shimoney. Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. I do see Councilwoman McCarthy has a comment, followed by Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, when I first read this, I was very confused. I didn't know what it was. But now that Mr. Aslan has explained it, I will give a thumbs up to support it.
All right, Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for bringing this up. You know, when you first brought it up, Councilmember, I thought to myself, that sounds like one-on-one meetings for sure. With like, and then I also thought about that awkward dynamic we have with staff and leadership and the struggles around having that direct honesty, given our, but, you know, do I, do I like intention of of what you're proposing? I absolutely do, and I fully support to better ourselves so that we can.
Is Shimonie cutting out for other people too?
Yeah, Councilmember Shimonie, you cut out a little bit in the last ten seconds.
For sure.
Repeat yourself.
Can you hear me now?
It's.
Can you hear me now? Uh, okay, maybe come back to me. Unless you can hear me.
You know, I'll turn off my video too, just in case.
You know, it's really on my end. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, I think you can keep your videos on. I think it's on my end. Anyways, I'll try to be quick and just say, I I support us doing whatever it is we can do as individuals and as a body to improve our, 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 our communication styles and leadership and and whatnot, improve as as leaders so that we can best serve our our team and our community. So I do support this moving forward and receiving staff time in in investigating if other communities do anything like this. I'd be curious to learn if there's anything out there that, you know, can help better support elected officials. I'm thinking about the League of City, maybe it might be a good reference to reach out to. But it might be a mix of things, right, Councilmember Aslan? Like, you know, such as like, you know, be with your colleagues once every six months. And then, you know, here's another, here's a few other things you can do, like a little toolkit, a toolbox. But I appreciate the intention behind this and 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 I'm curious to see how the conversation progresses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I support having a discussion as well.
All right. With that, there is a majority. My only comment is that this is going to utilize staff resources. I think that in a normal organizational format, we, you are evaluated by your supervisor and less common supervisee. We only have three supervisees, which are city attorney, city manager, and city magistrate. I, it is really uncommon and I I can recollect in any organization, whether private or public, where those who are being evaluated are not directly supervisee or supervisor. I feel, I feel that our work should be evaluated by our supervisor, which is the public at large. And we get that during election season when we're, you know, someone was knocking on doors, when we're talking to constituents, when we're learning how we can do better without dedicating the city government resources to it. So and I think this really, really, really puts our staff in a very awkward position. So there's already a majority to move forward with this. I just wanted to state some of my trepidations about this and how it is very against the grain of any organization that I have seen and the use of city staff time for that purpose. When we can evaluate that ourselves by personal conversations from our supervisor, the general public or supervisee, city manager, city attorney, city magistrate, is, I I don't see the use of public resources for this as necessary to get that input of valuation. So again, we we have a majority right now, so we are moving forward to this. I look forward to finding out what other cities are done or if this is completely unprecedented, which will also help us to have an informed decision when this comes before us again with council, given the majority. So, thank you. And if anyone has any other, these are cues before we move on to last call. And I'm not seeing anything further. So we are down to agenda item number fifteen, which is public participation. Do we have anyone for general public participation, city clerk?
Not this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to agenda item number sixteen, our informational items two from mayor, council, and staff and future agenda item requests. Since we did direct roll call lineup before, we will do the opposite now. So in terms of that, we are to Councilmember Sweet.
I don't have anything to add tonight. I do want to thank everyone for a very productive meeting and all of the updates. I just appreciate all of the hard work that goes into that. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I think as many people on this call know, but in case some don't, we have a very important budget retreat this Thursday from eight thirty to three P M. And then Friday from eight thirty to twelve P M. Just to let the group know, I'm actually participating in a conference today and tomorrow on alternative policing approaches across the nation. And today was very interesting, but I'll be watching the second half of the recording at some point in the weeks to come and doing my best to tune in tomorrow. But aside from that, not much else to add. Let me think. Good discussion today and just, you know, I guess a comment for our city clerk Stacy. We can get off, we can get together offline and talk about this more. But just curious where my my fares are in regards to transportation and and the policy discussion that council's asking for. But we can talk more about that offline. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, and have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a fair item which may be folded into the budget discussion at our budget retreat on Thursday and Friday, considering hazard pay across the board and continuing with premium pay for law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Councilwoman McCarthy.
I don't have anything to add tonight. Thank you. Good meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan.
Hazard pay, you don't have to answer Councilmember Solis, but I assume you're talking for council, right? That's a joke. So I I don't have much. I do have one announcement. I was going to mention this last week. But at some point, it went from Tuesday to Wednesday morning, and we ended early and didn't get to do two from. You've, you're probably all aware at this point from various channels that Theatric Coast is going through its fiftieth anniversary this year. The theater company just started their run of productions. Twelve Angry Jurors is is happening right now. There, there's nine different shows. It's happening three different weekends. The opening weekend was a lot of fun, a rousing success. I was able to participate in that cast. I auditioned for a play for the first time since high school and had a wonderful time with that. So there are still six opportunities to come see me on stage because you don't get enough of that during your normal work week these days. But be careful, if you blink, you might miss me. It's a bit part, but it's it's a lot of fun. And the the rest of the cast and crew has worked incredibly hard. And it's a good production. It's a very thoughtful production and timely one for these days. And so I highly recommend it to anybody who's looking for some live theater in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Aslan. I was going to mention Theatric Coast Theater Company's fiftieth anniversary as well. Congratulations. And also fifty years celebrating the Coconino Coalition for Children and Youth. They provide resources for families and learning opportunities, and I encourage people to get to know their work. And their web address is coconino kids dot org. The application period for the Flynn Brown Fellowship is open now, and I am a fellow with Flynn Brown through the Center for Civic Leadership, and it's one of the best things that I've ever done. It's very in-depth. You spend an entire day once a month going through all kinds of policy issues statewide. And they're accepting applications now through the twenty-eighth. And that web address is flynn, F L I N N, dot org. And if anyone has any questions about it, I'd be happy to talk to to anyone who might be interested in applying. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, on my front, I just want to let everyone know that we are going to be holding another N ninety-five event on Sunday from eight A M. to noon outside the downtown library. Very thankful for Northern Arizona Healthcare for donating now fifteen thousand N ninety-five masks to our community to help protect our our people, to be able to make people feel more comfortable going about their daily lives. And I'm very appreciative for this partnership. So eight A M. to noon in the parking lot of downtown library, it's just a drive-through process. And people are welcome to come and for yourselves, family members. And let's do our best to protect our neighbors through this additional spike. I mean, hopefully, we can see the the light at the end of the tunnel in this process. But in the interim, let's all do our best parts to protect one another through masking or just general support. So thank you with that. And then City Manager Clifton, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not, Mayor and council. Thank you for a thoughtful meeting. It's very good.
Thank you, City Manager. With that, then, we're down to agenda item never, number seventeen, which is we are adjourned. Thank you all for your attentiveness. Thank you for the presentations tonight. Good conversations. So have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.